Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We are going to begin our regularly scheduled session of Dr. Merrill Community and Economic Development Board. It is six oh three. Thank you all for coming here. We call the morning order. Now we will have the invocation brought by Mr. Marlin, followed by the pledge allegiance to the United States flag and Texas flag. Which is in.
Stand, join me in prayer. As in the spirit of invocation, we invite Most High and Almighty God to help preside over this meeting. We ask that you bless the men, women, and children who call this community home. Thank you for your covering, keeping us safe. God bless the men and women who work for this organization. And lastly, Lord, we ask you bless the economy, the city of Duncanville, and help us carry out the business we have tonight. And we ask these blessings in Christ our Redeemer. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, alright. Pledge of allegiance to the United States flag. Pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and the Texas pledge?
Under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is citizens' public forum. Do you have any citizens' comments from somewhere on this planet? Be it the internet?
No, sir.
No, sir. Okay. Okay. The next thing on the agenda I'd like to do is to move some items around. So. Okay. I would like to move the executive session from where it is to immediately after we make these changes. And I would like to change five A to five B. And move five B to five A. And the next thing I would like to do is to move six F to six A. And everything that's listed under six will be moved down from there. And that is it. So you probably have noticed that we do not have an attorney physically present with us, but we do have a very good attorney that is attending via Worldwide Web. And he is the Bob Hager of the City Law Firm. And so what I'd like to do is to call the executive session to order. And.
Mr. Hager, yes?
Yeah, uh, well, you've got reports and briefing. I don't, I don't mind doing the executive sessions. Your intent, Mr. Harvey, to pull that up? Uh, item seven up prior to the reports. And I'm fine with that. Just want to be ready.
Yeah, that's what I would like to do.
Okay. So your intent is to go ahead and bring agenda item uh, seven and in accordance with five five one point oh seven two deliberations regarding property at two two seven East Center Street. Uh, convene that executive session as well as the following one at five five one oh eight seven two regarding economic development negotiations regarding an offer of financial or other incentives to a business prospect. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. That's what I would, I would like to do. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright. So that brings us to number two, discuss. Eight?
No, we were doing one.
We're gonna reconvene.
Oh, reconvene. Do the reconvene at seven forty four. Six forty four. And you're exactly right, sir. Number nine, take any necessary appropriate action as a result of closed executive session. There is no action to be taken. Now. We are, we are now uh, to the number two. Item, agenda item number two, discuss and consider approval of the B C minutes for the regular meeting held on May nineteen twenty twenty five. And the regular meeting held on June twenty third twenty twenty five. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to look at the minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to be noted?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion unless somebody else has any comments, didn't see anything for the May nineteenth that we accept the minutes of that one. Are there any attendance on that meeting?
Okay. So it has been moved to accept the minutes. Uh, Mrs. Zilka?
Of May nineteen.
May nineteen, Mrs. Zilka. You were not here on twenty two. That's right. So we have to break them up. So Chair has a motion to approve the minutes of May the nineteenth. Uh, Mrs. Zilka, is there a second?
Second.
Second. So Ms. Aleah?
Thank you.
Yes.
Gotcha. Savage?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Payne? Harvey?
Yes. Alright. So it is those minutes are adopted six to zero.
Max.
Max zero. That's right. Okay. So now the, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on June twenty third twenty twenty five.
So moved.
So moved by Miss Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Payne.
Zooka?
I'm staying. I was absent that night.
Savage?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Harvey?
Approved. Yeah. Was too absent. Okay. I have three A on the agenda. Board members' reports. Does any member of the board have any information that they would like to share for the board? It takes us to the three B directors' reports. Mr. Victor.
Good evening and thank you. First of all, I want to thank those that were able to attend the joint meeting of the comprehensive plan. Uh, the next meeting uh, will be on August twenty fifth where the MRB group will present to you the revised plan and will move that through the adoption process. There is tentatively right now a special meeting scheduled for September thirtieth, where we're looking to have the comprehensive plan adopted by City Council. Um, last meeting, we had talked about a sales tax audit and presented to you a professional service agreement. I shared with you that I'd get more uh, information regarding that audit and professional services. Um, after a review of the agreements and discussion with the with the auditor, this is an item that will be presented to City Council and obtain uh, council approval on that professional service agreements. Um, and we will have that in front of the City Council on the meeting of uh, August nineteenth. Uh, the website, we had talked about the possibility of doing a website for uh, for economic developments. And speaking with our communications and marketing administrator, Alex Hamby, um, he was of the opinion that we may not need a website and we can make improvements to the webpage and use various tools to enhance the presence of of the information that's on this webpage. Uh, since we are going to be working on a series of economic development videos, uh, we recently hired a firm by the name of Neon Cloud to do uh, these economic development videos. Uh, Mr. Hamby was of the opinion that we should be done. We should work on, on those videos first and then once those videos are done, then we can talk about revamping uh, the webpage. He thought that that was the most efficient way of, of handling the, the revamp of the, of the page and the refresh of the page and the information on there. Um, over the last, over the course of the last few weeks, we've been talking about business visits. Uh, but really, uh, having a conversation about featuring the businesses or the gemses that are called in our community. And we talked at some length about doing and rolling out with a featured business video. And so here soon, we're going to be rolling out with that and we're going to start filming a few uh, businesses and showcasing them on our webpage and showing them to you and City Council and really uh, to, to the world, if you will. So as I have more information, I will share that with you and as the videos become available, uh, I will share those uh, completed, completed videos with you. That is all that I have.
Okay.
Yes.
In, in conjunction with that, driving around the Metroplex, I saw a billboard for Shop Local. The city is promoting Shop Local, so as we work on those things, maybe Shop Local could be something tied into that.
Uh, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
No, appreciate it.
Somebody else is doing it, just.
That is all, Mr. Harvey.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is for a post-event briefing, July fourth in Duncanville. Turn that over to staff.
Okay. I'll start by stating the obvious. I am not Devin Hanley, Special Events Planner. Who did uh, bossed a heavy lifting along with our friends from Parkton Recreation in the back for this event. Right? But I did tell her and she agreed. She'll make time to watch and so you know, feel free to congratulate her, uh, what we believe was a successful signature event. Um, this is a quick refresh. This was the parade route. So that's where we started our day. We had street closures coordinated with, you know, the events team, PD, Fire, and the Streets Department. Uh, so making use of that site intelligence, right, from our partners with Placer AI. We were able to create a map of the parade route to capture the attendance for the parade. Alright, we're happy to report that we had over a thousand um, families, members of the community participate in that parade. Alright, so the post-event recap, right, that we have with again, the organizational planning team, some of the things that came out of that, right? Um, we thought the, the traffic plan, um, the parade itself, the turnout, definitely positive. As we look forward to next year, some opportunities or improvement, right, again, keep figuring out the best way logistically to, you know, have kids and families participate in the parade, whether that be, you know, balls, candy, you know, we had to have a late audible to add candy back to the parade because initially there was a thought that wasn't going to be included. Um, and then the unfortunate circumstance of having, you know, one of the golf carts stolen, but thankfully recovered. So the team is already talking about uh, plans moving forward on how to secure. Uh, again, every year, we learn, right, and we adapt. And so that's just a snapshot of some of the internal feedback. And later in the slide, we'll share some of the community feedback that we had um, about the event. Okay. Questions?
Chief, we have any uh, any prospects, any suspects on who?
We know who it was.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. We could tell by his walk. I'll tell you that.
Oh my goodness. Okay.
Okay, alright. Next slide, me and Bill, Bill explained themselves. I won't talk over them, but we got some great photos captured by um, uh, the communications and marketing team. Right, so Alex and Francisco and their team got some great photos of the event. And we'll just click through those. Our sponsors, Freedom Chevrolet. Our board members had a chance to ride in some of those vehicles and we were able to kind of stage them around the park during the event. Okay? So again, parade, success. Like, hope to build upon that next year. Uh, next series of slides, the actual event, the celebration. And this was, you know, Devin's map that shows how the different exhibits and staging throughout the park. Again, looking at Placer AI, you'll see in the top left-hand corner, here's how we're able to isolate and designate, right, where we want to pull the data. So you'll see the footprint of Armstrong Park. You'll also see the date and the hour, what population was doing and attendance was doing throughout that day, throughout that period of our event. Alright, we're happy to report well over last year's uh, benchmark, just under thirteen thousand. Alright? As another example, right? Not at the park, but what was happening at Wheaton Plaza, right? Walking distance to this event, several members of the community decided to watch the fireworks in that location. This was happening at Wheaton Plaza. Hopefully, some transactions was happening there as well. Those businesses were open. Alright, so another one point eight thousand, right, if we want to add that at eight PM. Let's talk about competition. We're the city of champions. This is what it looked like on July fourth, right? So we had a, a joint city collaboration, De Soto and Lancaster at their community park. We're showing their peak attendance at nine PM, eleven point six. Using the same tool, we can cherry pick and look at any site in this community we want to. So that's what was happening in the region on July fourth. Right? In terms of our vendors, both the marketing and food truck vendors, happy to say that seven of them sold out. We out, we out of ribs or whatever they were selling. Right, market vendors, thirteen of uh, the total market vendors were local Duncanville businesses. Right? We're pushing to grow that number every year. Alright, some of the exhibits or events or activities, again, just a snapshot of all that was out there on that map a few slides ago. The amusement ride vendors, they were tracking the number of rides, right, that they were taking. Alright, and here's an example of at nine PM or that period, here's even more isolated within Armstrong Park who was near the amusement rides. Alright, so well attended. Alright, um, more insights. Now we're going to start getting into some of the community feedback. Um, keep adding new things, enjoyed the photo ops, the fireworks, obviously a splash pad on a hot evening. Internally, we, we need to grow our volunteer base, right? It's, it's a heavy lift on the organization. It's like all hands on deck. Very few departments in this organization not involved in July fourth, so we're just trying to figure out how can it be less um, a burden on, you know, the departments, public safety, parks, our team, streets, et cetera. And we think the opportunity to add more volunteers, like helping that effort, it also helped in terms of our labor costs as well. Um, tent requirements, this is something that we were riding around on carts and we had some periods of rain and wind during the event and so just again, lessons learned about tent requirements and more, more order lets. Alright, here's a ba- breakdown of the budget, how it was spread out. Uh, the lion's share is the actual vendors, the entertainment, and then we talked about the labor that's required. You know, the men and women in uniform having to secure that entire park, all the entrances, accounting for public safety in those instances. So this is the pie chart that shows how that event budget breaks down. Alright, we're coming up to the end. Just a few additional photos of vendors. You've got the mayor and City Council on stage. It's a good photo. And some of the state fair carnival style rides. Again, you see attendance peaking at dusk. The night fireworks. Okay. And then we want to give specific thanks to Francisco for this recap video. I can get it to start. I'll have a while.
This event benefits the community because it brings everyone together from all walks of life, all different sections of Duncanville, all different kinds of families and backgrounds. They all come together to have a good time.
I really like all the vendors that are out here. We're having a good time. They have great music. It's good for your kids. The whole family can enjoy it. It's a good time for everybody.
Alright. Thank you. You hear that, Devin? Okay, again, I mentioned earlier, just grab some of the feedback from our social pages and put together this graphic, yeah, just some real-time feedback from people who have a chance to attend the event. That's it.
Okay. Any questions about what we just seen and heard? Sir?
I just think Devin did a great job bringing it together. She got hit with that rain during the middle of the day, which, you know, hey, that's going to be what it's going to be. I want to applaud the volunteers with Citizens on Patrol and all those folks that came out to volunteer and their time just to, for public safety and direct people. You know, that's a huge commitment that these folks do put in and I want to applaud them for their time and service. And um, you know, uh, the other thought I had when I left, I thought it was a great event. Is there a way we could do another event the next night? We've got the infrastructure in place, the fencing and everything. Staff has the bandwidth for the security to do two nights, but if, if staffing, security staffing would allow and we've got something maybe for the next night if, depending on when the fourth is next year or the day before, you know, maybe use that infrastructure more than one night. Because that's a lot of fixed costs that we, you know, absorb on that one night. Maybe we can spread it out over two or get a promoter to jo- join in and split some of those costs with us. So, but great event.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Alright. So that takes us to public hearings. And the next item on the agenda is oh, okay. Alright, at this time, thank you, we will open uh, the public hearings. And we will begin with the public hearing to discuss and consider approval of resolution twenty twenty five and seven twenty four approving a police department funded request and authorize the president to execute the next necessary documents. We'll open the public hearing at seven oh one.
It's like comments after the presentation. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Evening again. Members of the board, armed and golf, members of all. So in your packet is a copy of the resolution along with the uh, formal letter from City Staff as well as a packet of data and materials submitted by um, Duncanville Police Department. What we've done here is just to try to consolidate that information uh, and send your packet graphically um, to, to help again, illustrate the talking points. Uh, but before you is a summary of the total requests proposed um, specific to the police department. Um, that request three hundred fifty eight thousand combined with the annual indirect cost allocation, right, that the city uh, applies to departments. Uh, again, for the support that they provide as a city department, whether that be fiscal services, human resources, payroll, printing, uh, parking, et cetera. Right? Um, some of the initiatives proposed with the police department and again, I'll recognize she's Zobner who's here in attendance as well as members of our uh, City Manager's Office. Uh, but again, this information again, just captured from the information in the packet. So some of the initiatives that they're proposing to use to enhance uh, their operations as it relates to public safety is listed, the right? And then, um, you know, I would just defer to Mr. Hagar as it relates to uh, the Local Government Code reference, but we did provide a section of the Local Government Code that we felt was specific uh, to four B corporations like ours uh, to make use of this type of funding. Right? So again, mentioning some of those exhibits that they provided as a supplement to the letter. Um, statistics, right? Looking a year back and the current year, uh, we see um, the reported increase in crimes in our commercial areas and it's specific to motor vehicle uh, theft and vandalism. Right, and so even called out a few local businesses specifically, right, that, that make up uh, a portion of those statistics. Right, and then again, some of the trends based on that data that the police department provided and then the areas affected. Alright, so here's just a summary, again, aligning what the Local Government Code provides. Um, the opportunity to potentially enhance or improve the uh, public safety at our commercial centers along our corridor. Um, has the potential again, to help in areas of business retention and attraction and, and um, expansion. And, and obviously then enhance uh, consumer confidence locally that people can patronize our businesses, our gems, and, you know, feel safe in doing so. And with that, um, I will stand for any questions and as mentioned before, we have members of the city staff here available as well.
Do you, do you have anything you want to add to what's been said?
Not necessarily. I, I guess the, the biggest thing I want to make sure it's understood is um, as the, the chief executive in the police department, um, I tend to really rely on data. Uh, when you have large concentrated area, i- it's in a small police department, for the most part, you have to rely on that data to be able to strategically move people in specific locations where it's very dense where the crimes happen. I believe you guys have crime maps uh, that show that. So when you look at eleven point two square miles and you have a shift of six or seven officers, you know, where, where do you, you throw a dart at the board and you say, okay, is this the area? And we tend to look at those dense areas and the majority of the dense areas, when it comes to vehicle crime, are in the commercial districts. And it's I twenty and Highway sixty seven, they highlighted some of the businesses. Uh, we actually have a lieutenant who's working right now who created a hotspot policing, essentially is what we're doing. It's strategic location, but it's a crime It's strategic location, but it's a crime suppression initiative that he, he completed. Um, and it was over a month period. Yeah, I believe you guys have that in your, uh, packet as well, and I just wanna cover it, cause he did a phenomenal job. So from December first to January twenty ninth of twenty three to twenty four, there were eleven BMVs, and this is just one business. There were eleven burglaries and motor vehicles and two stolen vehicles. After we conducted our crime suppression initiative in that location, we had one burglary, a motor vehicle, and no stolen vehicle out of that location. So just one thing, now that cost us about twelve thousand dollars, thirteen thousand dollars in overtime for a month. That adds up, I only have a certain amount of money in my overtime budget, so it limits what we can do. Um, so this, the other thing is a real time crime center. Real time crime center will allow us to be in multiple locations at once, cause you're utilizing it interfaces with current surveillance cameras. So you're able to watch numerous parking lots, um, at one given time by one person. You have a wall full of TVs. That, there's, uh, many advantages of it. Officer saves you because now we know what we're responding to. Uh, we're getting real time data, um, information of, hey, the suspect's left this way. A lot of things that we're seeing now is a lot of our stolen vehicles, um, they are displaying paper tags cause they're stolen, and you can print off a paper tag and put on your car. Um, so there's a lot of things that we're doing, uh, to hopefully minimize some of the impact that is happening at the commercial areas. And this is some of it. Um, drones, you use technology to your advantage. Yeah, and the real time crime center and drones are certainly a significant force multiplier for us. But it costs money.
Understood.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any, any, uh, any questions or comments on the board?
Yeah, I, I have some things that I wanna make sure that we do, uh, as the board considers this. You know, as Chief Stogner, do you have an allocation of the money that you're seeking to, uh, request from the board on, for these activities? Have you done what I call attribution of that six hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, yes. So, so if I can, if I can just chime in right quick, so basically, you know, we're talking about six hundred thousand dollars total, but as you can see there on the top left, two hundred forty two thousand goes back to indirect costs, uh, for the city. And, and, and those are things that we've done in the past, so that's, you know, purchasing, that's HR, that's IT, you know, those, those types of functions. So really for the police department, it's, it's the three hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars, uh, that would help support, you know, the crime fighting, you know, initiatives that, that chief spoke about just now, the, the stepped up patrols in some of those commercial areas, um, along with the corresponding, you know, e- equipment. And, you know, some of the supporting data, um, that, that was provided, that, that the police department helped put together last week. You know, it, it clearly shows those trends, you know, of the, of the crime that we're dealing with in those commercial areas. And even though a- around the city, we've seen, you know, some reductions in crime in, in some of the commercial areas, we're still seeing, um, increases, especially as it relates to motor vehicle, uh, burglaries and thefts. So, um, did, I believe in that packet, I, I think you had all the, those, um, maps and.
Yes, and, and point of clarity, so this would have been, you know, this wasn't in the original packet. We sent another, uh, attachment for this specific item on Friday, right? And it included the statistics, the crime heat maps that, that chief and Mark were referencing. So if you're looking for that, that's, it'll be a standalone submission to the board that include those documents he's referenced.
And, cause a- at the end of the day, if, if this is renewed, you have to have a way to evaluate whether the money is appropriately used, and then you create a history and it would preclude us from having to generate that maybe every year, uh, as the chief would come and give you a report on how your money has been spent using being this project.
Uh, attorney Hager, this is, uh, Patrick Harvey. Uh, could one of the, uh, things that, tools that we use in terms of, of measuring, uh, how this program is administered, the number of crimes that are occurring in the commercial focus areas?
Yes, uh, the, the whole idea, when we did this in, in Richardson, I'm familiar with that, cause the firm handled that. It, uh, focused on, um, things like with chief, uh, special overtime, uh, maybe it's, they, it could even drill down to, you know, you have generally all the activity in terms of, uh, checking buildings, in terms of overtime, in terms of having extra officers trying to evaluate, uh, that we, you know, our shift has twelve active officers, and out of that A shift or B shift, you know, how much of their time is generated, children checking the businesses and, and doing controls through there and build that attribution, uh, matrix, if you will, for us to consider what's an appropriate amount of, uh, C E D C funds used for these kinds of activities.
So maybe the way forward would be to have an association staff, uh, and police, uh, to work out a s- uh, a set of performance measures?
Yeah, yes, sir, yes, sir, that's what I'm, that, you know, since this is the first time we've considered it, it's kind of an amorphous thing, but as, as, uh, chief has indicated in, uh, his public safety funding request that you have up on the screen right now, uh, is, you know, use of technology. If we're purchasing crime prevention technology, you know, how much that's costing us that, and it's obviously center fo- uh, focused on, uh, commercial areas of town where there's activity, that that kind of, uh, technology would be helpful, and he's mentioned drones and so all those things so that we appropriately fund those things so they fall within the act.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions from the other members of the board?
Um, just, just something to add real quick. So, you know, the, the police units, they, and we just talked about this, police units have, uh, what's called A V L technology, the vehicle locator technology, and so that's, that's something too where we can pull reports and, you know, especially as, as you have the commercial area patrols that are, that are underway, you know, we can pull those data points and be able to clearly show, um, you know, the, the, the law enforcement activity in those, in those commercial corridors by just relying on the A V L data and the corresponding officers that were in the vehicle and, and be able to, you know, accumulate those costs pretty, pretty easily.
Good Mrs. Zelka?
Yeah, a couple of things for Mr. Director Verra is, in our total budget, if we were to allocate the full six hundred thousand, can you give us some summary of how that affects our budget and what, what we have remaining and what versus our current balance?
Um, yes, we have a summary of that, that's later on, even Mr. Goff has spent an immense amount of time looking at the budget and making those adjustments, so, um, we can discuss that later, if that's open.
Well, if you're looking for a vote, I kinda need that information to make a good vote decision, whether we table this or whether we vote yes or no.
Well, based on my understanding of what, of the guidance that Mr. Hager is providing, and Mr. Hager, please correct me if I'm wrong, we need to go back to the drawing board to create, uh, a program that meets the criteria for the funding. Uh, Mr. Hager, was my understanding correct?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's kind of, it's chicken or the egg kind of thing. I, I think that the, the biggest thing is, and you could do it in tranches. I, I know that the city is looking at this request and figuring whether that money's available to them as they prepare their budget, and as you prepare your budget. Uh, at some point in time, both of you, both the city and the board have to approve their budgets. And you could allocate some of it now, some of it later, uh, as you all deem appropriate. I, I assume the city would like to know that it's available, uh, and committed, uh, as they go through their budget. So that's why the request is being made now. And I think that both legally and, uh, politically, and it would be appropriate for you to, uh, in this first year, be a little more forgiving in terms of trying to do something that we've never done before, realizing. But the how, the whole idea, I would hope that, uh, both police department and city manager's office would understand that the money is supposed to be spent to offset the cost of increased, uh, crime related activity in our commercial areas, which is an economic uh, inappropriate use of those funds in order to protect our business community, uh, from crime. So having said that, I, I don't know that you can do that tonight, but I think as you move forward and as the money's spent, that there has to be some attribution of that money, that will offset the E D C's use. Courts have traditionally been very lenient because they said it's a local tax, administered by local officials, and the court will give great deference, however, it's not to be used as a splash fund to offset, uh, general operating costs in the city. So that attribution does have to take place either now or at some point of reckoning, uh, as, as the budget here transpires going forward. Does that answer your question?
So, 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 uh, attorney, I'm, I'm going to go back to what I just mentioned a few moments ago, and that is, I think the police department already has the capability to measure, uh, the amount of crimes that are occurring in the commercial areas, so they can do that right now.
Sure.
And, and what we can do to augment that, uh, let's talk to them. Uh, what I'm saying, uh, let's, let, let staff talk with them and probably also, uh, bring in, uh, the fiscal people as well to see the capabilities of the system, the mainframe system in, in terms of the type of data it can accumulate, and then we can build additional performance measures, uh, from that. But just off the top of my head, one of the most effective ways to determine, uh, whether or not the allocation is successful is basically the number of, of crimes.
Well, hopefully, and, and that, and that's not an inaccurate statement, but hopefully, uh, all crimes go away. Now, how do you measure that? And would be successful. And so if you continue, uh, with these programs that the chief has suggested to you, uh, the fact that crime's being reduced because of the increased activity, and the increased activity was supported by E D C funds, then that would be a correct measure, so I don't disagree with what you said.
Any, any other questions?
If I may, I was gonna say, in response to, uh, Mr. Zelka's question, um, we, the proposed budget, uh, assumptions includes the requests that are before you tonight on the agenda, including this item, subsequent public hearing items related to the budget. In terms of impact, it's, it's, it's assumption is it's included in the proposed budget.
And I would think we'd be able to delay the vote until we've gotten through all of the, all of the information. And then at the end, we can go back to each item and say, okay, do we wanna do this, do we wanna do that? That's all I'll say, will that work? It's okay.
All right.
So, go, go ahead, uh.
No, you, you can go ahead and hold the public hearing. I mean, you know what they ask is, you know, basically what information that they brought to you tonight and what they're asking for, and they think is, I would assume that both chief and the city manager's office think that that, uh, request is, uh, robust enough to help offset some of the cost of, uh, crime suppression and prevention in our commercial area. And then, um, you could close your public hearing, and then if you desire, you could take up the consideration of actually approving the resolution after you review the budget.
Okay, yeah, I think that's how we move forward.
Okay.
So any other questions about the, uh, police department funding?
Okay, silence means none.
Uh, President Harvey, or is there anyone that wants to speak on this item? Public?
Yes, we have a member of the public who wants to speak on the item, so state your name and address for the public, and you have three minutes.
Three minutes, two.
Oh, two minutes.
Two, yeah, okay. Uh, Patricia Ebert, one one five South Greenstone, excuse me, I strongly support this, uh, request. And I, my concern is the last city meeting that I heard our current budget being discussed was the July fifteenth audit meeting, and in that meeting, uh, Mayor Contreras did ask that the budget administrator clarify that we have a budget deficit because he wanted the citizen mi- members to hear it fro- in a city meeting rather than from the public. And the number I'm hearing is that we have a budget deficit right now of about four million and maybe counting. And so my concern is, and I'm hearing, that this could be a twenty twenty six budget item, but my concern is, I don't know, I haven't heard how we're gonna make up from July fifteenth to now July twenty eighth, a four million dollar deficit.
Thank you. Okay, any, anyone else want to speak for or against this item? Okay, so in proc- in proceeding now, do we just, uh, close this?
You can, and you can close the public hearing and move consideration of this resolution till, uh, after your, uh, budget item.
Okay, so we will close the public hearing at seven twenty five, and we will defer consideration of this item until we have gone through all of the public hearings, uh, as listed on the agenda. So we go to the next public hearing, and that is conduct the public hearing to discuss and consider approval of resolution twenty twenty five and seven twenty three approving the signed grant to take out burglars located at seven ninety five West Wheaton Road, Duncanville, Texas, and authorize the president to execute the necessary documents. Mr. Ver.
Good evening, thank you. Uh, as first, this item, I'm being, I'm gonna request that the board table this item. There was a letter that we provided, uh, that was, that was placed on your table. That letter was, was provided, um, before we had an opportunity to meet with the business owner and discuss her, uh, grant application at length. Um, as, as a result of that conversation, she has requested for us not to proceed with any discussion regarding this, uh, application. This application will be presented to you at a future meeting.
Okay, any questions or comments on what we just heard? All right.
Thank you.
So we will close the public hearing on this one? No, there was no public hearing. Oh, reopen it? Okay.
Uh, this one, you don't even have to worry about it, cause we'll have to renotice it, uh, unless we have a date certain Mr. President, so, uh, I'll, I'll defer to Victor if we're gonna republish whatever notice. I don't think there's any special notice requirement other than the meeting agenda.
No, our, our goal at, at this time is to present at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Which is?
August twenty fifth.
August twenty fifth?
Okay, just FYI, as of, uh, September first, you have to give three business days notice after August. Anyhow, that's that's a different issue for Mr. Brewer and Ms. Perez and I to look at, so.
Thank you. Between the two of you, y'all y'all worked that out.
Yeah, we'll take care of it, we'll take care of it.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Motion to table or no?
No motion is necessary.
Thank you. Okay. So this brings us to see conduct the public hearing to discuss and consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-five SG dash nineteen approving the beautification grant to the Parks and Recreation Department and authorize the president to execute any necessary documents. Staff.
Okay, good evening again. This item uh for referencing your packet was actually presented, excuse me, presented to this board at the June twenty-third EDC meeting, right? At that time, just again, as we're considering going through our budget process, uh no action was requested at that time. Today, this item is before you, uh seeking approval via resolution um for Parks and Recreation and and their beautification program. So we just brought forward the presentation that the Parks and Rec staff made last month. It's a quick outline of the history of this this corporation's support of beautification efforts, its eligibility under the four B Corporation, the local government code, and and again, examples of what they're proposing to use the funding for and what some of the other communities in the region have done so. Um and here's a quick snapshot example of the the funding areas that, excuse me, that the Parks Department is proposing as part of this funding request. Impact, return on investment. And then a quick summary of at that time, what was proposed in the request for funding. Okay, what you'll see on this last slide is the comparison since that original request, right? And as we've gone through our exercise to evaluate the number of different funding requests that we had to account for during this fiscal cycle, right? And so what you'll see is an adjustment um in a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars from what was initially requested uh for from Parks and Recreation under this beautification program to what is proposed as part of our our FY twenty-six budget, right? And then the line items impacted concurrently. I would note that um Assistant Director Tyler A G is here again, uh should there be any questions. Uh he along with the budget staff have been working with us to account for these proposed adjustments uh over the course of the last month or so. And so they're aware of what's being proposed before you tonight and the differences represented from when they were here last month versus again, the proposal that we have outlined on the slides. Okay, and so that's the last slide with that. Happy to stand for any questions about this item. And then member of the Parks and Rec staff is available as well.
Okay. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak for or against this item? We have a member of the public, come up. Uh what? You have to open the public hearing? Okay, y'all keep me on rock and roll as well, thank you. Okay. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
All right. So now we're going to open the public hearing for this item at seven thirty P M. All right, so now is there any member of the public? Yes. State your name and address for the rec.
Yes, Patricia Ebert, one one five South Greenstone. I'm here to tell you that as a liaison for the Keep Duncanville Beautiful, uh Mr. A G can verify, testify to this. They put on the most marvelous community programs. I go to them, I was there last Saturday. They get top-notch premier presenters. They are marvelous programs. We I just I've said this before, I've said this to Mr. A G, the programs ought to be held at Duncanville High Auditorium. That's how many people we should have. So I support all the beautification, all you do is drop by my yard. See, I spend money on plans, okay, okay. So I'm all for this, we just have to pay for it, that's all.
So thank you, Ms. Ebert, is there anyone else? So therefore, we will close the public hearing at seven thirty-two.
Mr. Harvey, I don't know if the board members uh wanna wait till vote on this resolution until after the budget presentation like the request for of uh police department funding. Uh you may do so if if the board is of a mind to do so.
So after hearing this attorney, uh does the board have a mindset to act on this particular item now? Or would you rather wait until we go through the budget?
I'd like to make a motion that we wait on that, but I'd also, I apologize, I missed um some information from last time. What's the change in budget from last year's contribution for Keep Duncanville Beautiful line as compared to this this request? Do we know that?
I give that information.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to know that. I'd like to move it till later after we hear the uh our our budgets and how much funding we have.
Park staff may have an answer to that question.
I was just asking, I don't know if you were looking for the exact amount or the reason for the increase. I I don't have the the exact number off the top of my head, but I can give you some pretty good justifications as to why the number went up. So um this year, the city went out for a request for proposal on a new mowing contractor, which uh we don't in-house any mowing for the city of Duncanville. We contract out every blade of grass. Um within those jurisdictions, the tech-stot right-ofways, the EDC lots, city facilities, parks, athletic fields, um uh uh right-ofways and medians are all contracted out to two contractors within the city. And ideally, their cost, labor, materials have gone up um from our previous contractor uh or contract three three years ago. Um so that's gonna be the the largest portion of why um we're requesting more money this year is uh mainly the landscape and mowing is is really um taking everybody by storm. I think Cedar Hill just went to a one point three million dollar budget, ours total one point two million. So everybody's seeing that kind of cost increase as far as landscape maintenance.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So then we'll move to uh the Economic Development Budget. Staff.
Okay, I continue with the uh public hearing. All right, so included in your packet, we included the uh budget detail uh from our munis finance system as well as a a summary of the budget broken down by fund, right? And so some of that'll be, again, carryover in this slide presentation. So we'll start with the revenue and working with the finance staff. Essentially, our budget revenue is based on the forecast of sales tax uh that'll be collected in the upcoming fiscal year uh with a little bit of interest and miscellaneous revenue baked into that. So in total, um we're anticipating revenue available for the fiscal year at three point five million dollars. You note that the proposed budget before you uh contemplates a a surplus in in the operation of the budget at a little over one hundred nine thousand dollars. And then to the right, we see how the various funds are broken out. And as mentioned earlier, this proposed budget accounts for the funding requests uh that were part of the earlier uh public hearing items uh tonight. I would say Economic Development Administration, including in that fund is both personnel costs, professional services. So example would be our legal fees, our marketing, um software, et cetera. Development centers, we'll see a breakdown of that categorically. And then earlier tonight, again, we have requests for a total of six hundred thousand dollars for transfers to the general fund. That's just the uh the accounting label, right? That you'll see if you were logged in the munis, how it actually unfolds. But it's representative of the indirect costs, right, applied to our department. And then the public safety uh funding request, that's still under consideration. Um special events, again, think of how we started off earlier in the night. So our signature events, July four, holiday lights, you know, some of the cultural festivals that are part of our annual menu of events. Those are categorized in that fund. And then most recently, we just talked about the beautification program through Parks and Recreation. So all in, three point three nine two, just under three point four million dollars as a proposed budget. If we were looking at this as slices of pie, right, the biggest slices, incentives and administration, right? Just beneath that, again, those transfers to the general fund and then rounding out what we do um is the community development arm of the corporation, right? Those special events, those things where we bring the community together and kind of celebrate uh who we are as a city. And then beautification, enhancements, medians, right-ofways, parks, et cetera, uh would be that fifth fund category. And so again, percentages line up across the pie chart. How we anticipate ending the year with all that being said, right? So right now, in the bank in terms of fund balance, corporation, we anticipate in the fiscal year, excuse me, beginning the fiscal year at roughly six million dollars of fund balance. Um and then obviously, we showed in the previous slide, we line up revenues minus expenditures, a hundred nine thousand dollars dairy that will be added to that fund balance because again, we're forecasting the end of the year um in the positive with a hundred nine thousand in reserves, right? This last category is one of the exercises that we did as a staff, working with Victor and 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 Marcela, just brainstorming about how we could still accomplish some of the things strategically and more specifically, land acquisitions, public-private partnerships. So what we're showing is as opposed to allocating this amount in our expenditure budget, uh this fund balance position proposes is should we um be in a position to take advantage of a strategic acquisition or public-private partnership deals or several of those? We would make access of our fund balance, right, for that transaction. And so what you'll see is, here's what we're proposing to end the year in terms of our fund balance. And it would be specific and authorized only for that activity, right? Like not for operations or anything else. Fund balance, again, this proposal would only be authorized for strategic land acquisitions or development, public-private partnership agreements, okay? So then to the right, as a recap, we're saying we're showing uh in terms of our oper- operating reserves in the year with a little over three and a half percent of operating reserve based on revenues and expenditures, right? Industry practice, anywhere from two to five percent, so we're in good shape, right? That's proposed to be favorable. And even with the authorization to use fund balance, should we find a strategic deal to participate in, right? We're still be in relatively good financial position in terms of the fund balance. All right, believe it or not, that concludes the slides and presentation. Again, what I wanted to do is, what we wanted to do as a team or a staff is to get the actual document, get this summary in front of you so that you had, you know, more than the typical turnaround time when we send out our normal pack, uh excuse me, agenda packets to kind of consider what questions or thoughts you might have in response to what was proposed and presented for you for this uh fiscal budget. So with that, um then we're in the public hearing, so I don't know, Mr. President, if you wanna take any questions for the staff or open up to the public.
All right. So what we'd like to do at this time is to see if there's anyone in the public who would like to speak for or against this particular item. Is there anyone present? Seem not. Uh, board, do you have any questions for the staff in terms of the budget that was presented? So is open. Any question? Oh, any comments or questions?
With the land acquisition, the six hundred thousand, that would still come to this space to be presented.
And I uh I do have a question. My question is, there is an item in the budget. And it's under the category of Economic Development Administration. And it's on page eight. Economic Development. Administration, page eight. And the first item there says vehicle li- vehicle lease, business retention and site tools. And so that is twelve thousand dollars. So can you all provide some information uh concerning that particular initiative to the board?
Sure, um I I can't. So last last year, we had presented, there was money in the budget for the department to to purchase a vehicle to do uh some economic development business. And so uh it received approval, uh the purchase of the vehicle was received approval from the corporation. Uh we then took the matter to city council, there is a series of questions regarding the amount of use, the frequency of the use, et cetera. And then there came the question of just the overall legality of who owns the vehicle, the maintenance, et cetera. So there are a number of details that we needed to work through. And so over the course of the last few uh months, we've been working on a business business retention and expansion program that we presented uh to the board here uh on numerous occasions. And uh one of the things that we discussed was if we're gonna commit to visiting and 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 fostering these business relationships, we're gonna need a vehicle to to get around. Uh we can't be in a position where we're using our personal vehicles uh to conduct city business because that creates a bit of a a liability. Um and we need to have a vehicle available to have uh developer tours and community tours, et cetera. And we just need to be able to have something to use. Uh currently, we've been using our own personal vehicles to conduct business visits. Uh we have been using a vehicle from time to time for administration so long as the vehicle is available. Uh this time around, what we thought we'd do is as opposed to purchase a vehicle that may not get as much use as other vehicles in the fleet, in the fleet, we thought that maybe the best idea was to lease a vehicle. That way, we don't have to worry about the maintenance, the everything that's associated with purchasing the vehicle. And then uh and by going the lease route, we can also be in a position where we can support the local business, meaning Freedom, Jeep, Chrysler, et cetera. We can lease the vehicle from a local estab- establishment and uh continue to foster that local relationship. But at the same token, meet the needs of the department and the frequency of the business visits, the attendance of conferences, et cetera. So that's why we put that dollar amount in there to um pursue something a little bit different from where we'd previously proposed to outright purchase a vehicle, so in this case, uh lease a vehicle. That provided us a little bit more flexibility, but the same token, um it was our hope that it would address some of the concerns about maintenance and licensing and et cetera. Um and that's why we put a dollar amount in there as a placeholder, as opposed to the full purchase amount. Previously, there was a hundred thousand dollars in the budget that had been allocated for a vehicle purchase. And if memory serves correct serves me correctly, the vehicle that we had brought to the board and ultimately to city council was a vehicle with a price that go fifty-six thousand dollars. That we was, it was under budget, uh but still that had some concerns about just the logistic of maintenance, et cetera. And again, we just thought that it might be best to go in a slightly different direction, but also use this as an opportunity to support a local establishment.
Oh, thanks, Director Vera, I may add for the board, um if you remember in May, staff brought- Oh, thanks Director Vera. Let me add for the board, um, if you remember in May, staff brought this before you, um, when we were discussing the work plan and our goals, and it was actually your, um, suggestion to move forward with looking into acquiring a vehicle so that we could accomplish these goals.
So, uh, is, is there any sense of a comparison of this cost with what is taking place right now in, in the past in terms of vehicle reimbursement to employees? Do we have a sense of how much that is compared with, uh, this new proposal of twelve thousand dollars for a leased vehicle?
Well, we can definitely provide you the analysis, but what it does not take away from a risk, risk manager, risk management standpoint is the risk of every time the employee using a personal vehicle to conduct city, city business. Um, it's been my experience with previous communities that, that community takes on a bit of risk when you have, you're conducting city business on, on a, on a personal vehicle, when there may be a fleet vehicle that's available. Again, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of, of risk management. Can unemployed submit for reimbursement? Absolutely. And there is a, there is a formula for submit for reimbursement. The question becomes, again, risk management and putting staff in a situation where they're, uh, asked to use their personal vehicle to conduct, uh, city business.
So, in terms of the, in terms of the maintenance of it, then the maintenance of it will be provided by, uh, Freedom Chevrolet?
The dealership is part of the lease term negotiations, yes. That was, that was the intent, or that is the intent.
So it doesn't, so it doesn't impose a burden on the city's vehicle maintenance?
Maintenance staff, yes.
Any questions? Sir?
Um, the city has fleet of vehicles. Have we thought about tagging on to their program and getting a, a, a car allocated to the department and could utilize the same, um, maintenance that they currently may have a contract with?
Uh, yes, uh, we have explored that option. Uh, but then the question, at, at least at the city council level, was raised about the frequency, the, uh, how often the vehicle would, would be used. And back then, uh, we didn't have the business retention program that we proposed and talking about, uh, conducting as many business visits on a monthly and a regular basis. So now we have that, that we can make the case of the need for, and the use, the frequency of the use of that vehicle. Um, it's something like that, something that we can continue to explore, yes. Uh, the other part honestly was that we didn't want to use a large dollar amount in purchasing a vehicle when we would potentially use that same money for incentives and really grow that money, as opposed to, as someone say, put money into a depreciating asset.
Can you refresh my memory? Who, where does the insurance come from, that's where our corporation?
Uh, my understanding is come from the T M L.
So we pay T M L for the insurance? So we'd have to pay for the full year, essentially, the, if we have the lease for a full year. Um, Mr. Hager, can you help us out with that one?
Well, the, uh, if it's this lease, and that asset would show as a city asset, technically, if it's covered under the insurance, that the, or the risk pool, uh, property and all the way up, it is declared and make sure it's used for a public purpose. And if it's being used for the public purpose, it's covered in the overall, uh, premium or contribution in case of the risk pool. So, I would assume that staff has made an allocation of its proportionate share of that, um, number that they've provided to you as a contribution under the, um, Economic Development Administration.
Mr. Hager, from, I, I'm so sorry. From a risk, miss, risk management standpoint, I, I, forgive me, I'm sharing my experience with communities that I dealt with back in Illinois. Is, would the same apply here in the state of Texas?
Be, if, if there's an accident that occurs, the city employees which all of you are, uh, were involved and they would fall within T M L risk pool and under respondent superior, they would be deemed city employees for the purpose of, uh, exemptions to the Texas Department of that, and the city would be responsible to the extent of the bullets fall.
Uh, from the standpoint?
Technically, all are city employees, and that's what's covered under the general, uh, development admin. And so since you're a city employee, the city would be responsible, not the city.
From the sense of, of best practice, communities kind of more along, go along the lines of having city employees use city vehicles to conduct city business and kind of a, as much and as best as possible, try to have, do away with.
And, and yet, the answer would be yes. And, and, cause otherwise, your personal vehicle insurance might come into play as well, so it's better to just have the employees operating a city-owned vehicle or a city-sponsored vehicle, who's moving using your own vehicle. Plus the fact your own vehicle is then out of commission, and so how you need to work.
Okay. Any other questions?
If you like the police chief uses his, his personal vehicle to conduct patrol, wouldn't do that. So I wouldn't think he would do that for other city functions as well.
Sir?
Question, under the lease program, would the, would the rental company, I guess, handle all the vehicle maintenance? Was, was that baked into that?
That was our hope, that we would do this. Yes, that all oil changes, all routine vehicle maintenance would be covered, um, as part of the lease terms. And in this case, we're, um, hoping to lease the vehicle from Freedom, an establishment in the community.
Who would manage that?
Um, the manager of the, the negotiations of the lease terms, or the manager and just the overseeing?
Or the maintenance?
Uh, the department would, but at, at the end of the day, it's ultimately a city vehicle. And we would coordinate that with, with our fleet maintenance, but again, the responsibility, the thought was that the responsibility of maintaining that vehicle would not fall on any of the city employees. If anything, there might be just the coordination of the maintenance of that vehicle with the city employee and the dealership.
So somebody in the department is going, going to take the car to get the oil changed?
I'm sorry.
Who's, who's going to take the car?
We could do that.
We can have it. Who's going to take the car to get the oil changed?
I'll do that.
You take the car.
We would take the car to get oil, oil change washed, but we would also use that as an opportunity to conduct a business visit and a check-in.
I will add also, um, in addition, in addition to the business retention visits, the idea is that we would use this vehicle, so when we are courting developers, which has been done already several times this year, that this vehicle would also be used. Cause the other thing is with current city fleet, we can't guarantee the condition. We don't know, it would take time for staff to go and have to take it to the car wash, get it cleaned out if it's in even the condition that we would want to court a developer in. So this would give staff the ability to know that a video, a vehicle is immediately available and that it is in good working condition, and it, it has professional appearance.
Would it have, uh, branding?
Yes, we talk about having some simple branding, but yes.
It, it, it's required under law that if it's a city-owned vehicle, it has to be branded.
So the answer is yes.
But branded for the board?
I'm sorry?
For the, our, our city.
Yes.
Not just the city, but the specific?
No, it's so, no, no, that's a good part. The other part of it that we haven't discussed and opened up is that, um, this evening, we had a post, post event summary of the Fourth of July. The event planner is located, is under the Economic Development Department, and there have been a few occasions thus far where, uh, Devin has had to go to Costco, make runs, and there isn't a vehicle available to bring, um, the snacks, the beverages for the volunteers. So this vehicle would also be used by the event planner for, um, tasks, getting items for this, our specific signature events.
So you wouldn't have to play nice in the sandbox with other departments?
I mean, we're happy to play nice in the sandbox, but sometimes our needs and other department needs are different, and so that we just don't, um, things just don't, uh, align as well as we would like to.
So, let me, let me just, uh, let me just throw this out there. As you, as you would look at, let's say, the fiscal year twenty-five budget versus the proposed fiscal year twenty-six budget, so what would you say would be the difference in the two budgets, uh, that the board needs to know? What's different between the way that we're doing this now? I mean, you're granted, numbers are going up and down. But what is it that we hope to accomplish with this budget that we didn't do, whatever, in previous years' budgets? What's the difference?
Um, just a few five minutes.
Good.
Uh, that's a good question, and I think that goes back to the other items that, that we will be discussing later on this evening, that we've been talking over the course of the last, uh, few months, specifically, taking a, a real close look at the economic incentive and grant policy, and changing, and at the direction of the board making very strategic and calculated changes to the manner in which this board reviews, processes, and approves these applications that have come before you. Um, you have a segue where now, hopefully, if the board approves this proposed, uh, uh, changes, that you will have more ma- more metrics, more measurables, and that you have less of a situation where you're handing money out. You're handing money out, and you have, you're really seeing your return on, on investment. I mean, that's one of the biggest ones, and that also then goes to the bylaws. And, and now we're starting to see how the bylaws, the policies, and now even the budget all come, uh, come together. This is, I'd say this is a, you know, months in the works where we've been sharing with you drafts of the policy, drafts of the bylaws. Uh, I can't tell you how many drafts of the budget we've worked through. Um, kudos to Marlin and Marcela and the finance team, um, and everyone. And really, this has been a team effort to put the budget that we have, uh, put together, that has been put together in front of you. Mr. Harvey, we've met with you on a few occasions and laid out some of the strategies and why we're doing what we're doing. Uh, we heard your directive and your marketing orders, that you wanted to be able to present a balanced budget. Uh, you did not want us to go into, uh, into the fund balance. And so we have penciled and penciled and made several adjustments. Uh, but really, the, the biggest adjustment, and I'd say we've made an adjustment on the development incentives. Uh, this is not to say that we're not going to give out money and that we're not going to support the community. What we're really just saying is that we're going to go about it a different way of supporting the community. We're going to go more performance-based, more on the reimbursement base, but really, we're going to try to do away as much as possible with front-loading the money and really have the applicants deliver as they say they're going to deliver, invest the kind of money that they say they're going to invest, and through that revenue that comes from that investment, then reimburse.
Okay. So, we have questions?
What's the source of the miscellaneous revenue?
So, give you an example. Our signature events, right, is, is an example where even though we, we spend way more money than we generate, there is some incremental revenue that occurs via vendor registration permitting. Um, and so that's the example, sponsorships, right, for, for those events. So that would be example of what the finance department, who is solely tasked with generating the revenue forecast, when asked that, that clarified a question to our budget administrator, that line item is, is the forecast or placeholder for miscellaneous revenue, uh, for those type of development activity.
Okay. So, uh, again, the question is, do we as a board have enough information, feel comfortable enough, uh, with this budget that we are prepared, uh, to consider and act on it? And if we feel that way, the chair will entertain a motion. We should probably start in order. I think I did.
You did ask.
Yeah, I did. Cause I was looking around, I was looking at Ms. Fees.
I, I testify.
Okay, she testified by golly, it happened. There you go. Okay, so now at two minutes after eight, we will close the public hearing. Okay? And so, with that being said, the chair will entertain a motion to to consider approval of Resolution twenty-two-five dash seven-twenty-four approving a police department funding request. The chair will entertain a motion. Sir?
Mister Chairman, it'd be appropriate, is go ahead and approve the budget, since both those grants are out of this budget. And then the grants, I would assume, I don't know if Mister Shelby's got drafts of those, but those grants are really effective October first, right, when the budget's approved? And it goes into effect.
Yeah, thank you so much. You would think an ex-finance director would remember something like that. Cause you approved the tax rate before you do the budget, right?
Right, so you approved the budget, and I assume the grants would be approved, but they won't actually be funded until the new budget goes into effect October first.
Okay. And so, uh, the chair will entertain a motion at this point to approve the proposed fiscal year twenty-six budget.
So for clarification, this is just the budget, not the, the, the other two items, correct?
It is just the budget. We're not, we're going to talk about the other two items in just a minute.
I'm correct, the other two items are encompassed in the budget as presented.
So if one of those two items were not approved, that just leaves a surplus in the budget for that allocation, correct?
Exactly correct.
Just for a simple example.
Sure, absolutely. Been hanging around accounts. Chair will entertain a motion at this time. Yes.
I moved that we approved the budget as presented for the safe one.
So, so the record will reflect a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-five dash six dash twenty-one, is that correct?
That's correct.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay.
It is in the A.
All right, it's out there. Thank you. Miss Tammy Avneys has so moved, is there a second?
I'll say it then.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, so now we will, uh, we will hear from, uh, Ms. Murray. Oh, is there a question?
Yes, sir. I'm just a little concerned about our budget, that we're, we're running tighter than I think the, the city traditionally has in the past with our reserves. While we can go ahead and approve the budget, um, we as the board, I think, need to be mindful as we spend future dollars, how much how much that tightness is because this board always gets seen, always seems to get asked for funding out of the blue. And, um, running that tight of a, of a budget with that tight of a surplus, um, is just gonna put us in a position down the road that some point in time, we either have to say no or table it until twenty-twenty-seven's budget. And I just wanna make that comment, that, that's one observation I noted.
Okay, so, one, I think staff hears you. And I think the initiative that staff will be consistent in, the fiscal year twenty-six, is providing us on a routine basis, budget versus actual, so that we can see where we are in terms of spending.
That's correct.
Number one. Number two, I think that, uh, Mister Golf, uh, alluded to something earlier that I liked an awful lot. And, and that is, there is a fund balance, but that fund balance is supposed to be used for cer- for a designated purpose, which he stated. So it's, it's not there to nibble, dribble, all that stuff way at. You know, if, when these unusual or unexpected things happen, then they come out of current operating revenues. And then that triggers a decision to not do so much of what it is that we intended to do. Make sense? Okay, so I think we're at the point where we can do a roll call, vote.
Yes, Mrs. Avney.
Before we vote, can I just make one other, make a comment? I was just gonna say maybe in the future, it may be a good idea, since there were, um, questions about previous year, it might be a good for us to have like a side-by-side from the current year to the previous year for us to be able to make com- some comparisons. Cause it's, it's, it's nicely printed, but it would have been good, particularly since there are some large, um, asks from some city, um, la- large asks with city requests. So it would have been good to be able to kind of balance those and, um, and also see where those are coming from. Are they different departments? Is it the same department? Is there something there?
We, that, that can be done, and I will be happy to assist in it.
Okay.
No, that's fine, appreciate the feedback.
That would go.
This is our first time as this group doing the budgets, so it's definitely a learning opportunity.
That you do the compare, contrast in the two years, but then the little rationale is sort of a third column as to why the increase or decrease, for whatever reason.
Or where it came, especially if it was a city thing, where did that come from? Or, or remember last year, it was the fire department, this or whatever, just those, those.
No, no, that's fine, that's like, you know, when we talk about how this then wraps up into the bylaws, that's even the conversation that we had in the bylaws, that we wanna have these budget conversations earlier in the year and make the necessary changes in current bylaws, so we can accommodate those conversations and give us enough room to make changes and not feel that we're rushing in the month of July, so, yeah.
There's a, there's motion on the floor.
In a second, in a second.
Yes, yes.
All right, Avney, hi. Zoka?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Tanta?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes. Okay. Okay, so the next item will be the chair will entertain a motion to consider approval of Resolution twenty-two-five dash seven-twenty-four concerning the, uh, police department funding requests and authorize the president to execute the necessary documents. The chair will entertain a motion for or against at this time on that item.
Mister Harvey, um, I'd like to request we tabled this one for one month. I did not have good opportunity to review the separated attachment. Um, and I have a lot of questions about the whole item, so unfortunately, my tardiness on this topic kinda may delay this one a little bit. For some more research, for me, that's my personal opinion. So, I'm just making sure how everybody else feels.
I agree with Mister Zoka. But you know, there is a deficit, and it seems that the same mistake already is a big portion of the budget allocated for us, like just with requests now. So I just wanna make sure that we do consider everything that's already brought before us before we start approving everything.
Okay.
Mister President, why don't you just entertain a motion to table until the next meeting?
I will entertain a motion to table until the next meeting.
That's my motion.
That's Mister Zoka's motion, is there a second? Uh, Ms. Payne?
I have a second.
Okay.
Mrs. Avney?
Hi.
Zoka?
Hi.
Savage?
Hi.
Tonsen?
Hi.
Payne? Harvey?
Ah. Okay. Okay, so the next item for approval is Resolution twenty-two-five dash six dash nineteen to approve or disapprove a beautification grant to the Parks and Recreation Department. The chair will entertain a motion for that one.
I'm just making sure that's three hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-two. Who's closer, four hundred, I'm trying to think.
I, I guess I'm asking, cause he said four thousand, four hundred thousand sixty-three, he said change, but then, um, the budget summary is showing three forty.
I think, I think what happened on that item was they made a request for a certain amount, and, uh, the board in balancing its budget reduced the amount that was asked to the three hundred. Yeah, so the difference at the bottom of that screen was the one. Right. So what, right, so, so what we are asking to approve or disapprove is the three hundred thousand.
But their grant is for the four sixty-three.
They're asked, the request is.
The original, the original.
The original rest of the funding, I'm sorry, yes.
But what's proposed before you is three hundred.
Right, I guess I'm asking as it's written here, because it says beautification grant. So are we consistent with the way it is written at five, which is now five C, yeah, five C? That amount or the original amount?
The proposed amount, not the original.
Okay. Yeah.
So, three forty-nine, five eighty-two.
That is correct.
Yes, sir.
And with that.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say with that, I understand, I remove that we, um, approve Resolution twenty-five, twenty, twenty-two-five, sorry, dash six, dash nineteen, approving the beautification grant to Parks and Recreation Department, and authorizing staff to execute the documents.
So moved by Miss Savage, is there a second?
I have a clarification question. Based on the three forty-nine, that would start essentially October first in the new, new budget, so there would be no payment until the new budget. Second motion.
All right, you second it? Question?
So when we, with that difference, they just make it up, they just, they're asking it, how does that work? They're a hundred, a hundred.
Well, yeah.
They're kind of grand short.
What I would say is this, uh, sorry, is, is piece of their larger department budget, right? Um, and so, you know, you ask for what you need or hope to receive. And as Mister Harvey and we pointed out earlier, we would just, you know, having to really evaluate the categories that we maybe felt there was an opportunity for us to, you know, come in below what was initially requested. Um, the feedback I got from this agent partners that they're aware of the adjustment, because actually what happens is different from our normal reimbursement grants, because they're a city department. And so their budget will be in the finance system and available to them on October first at the start of fiscal year. So it's not technically something that we have to reimburse for them, right? And so as we're building the budget in the finance system, they're working with finance, we're working with finance, they're helping, you know, both departments answer these questions. Um, I guess the short is they're aware of the proposed and feedback that we got is that they'll make it work. So, um, yeah, the example on, on the breakdown shows kinda the before and after, right? In terms of what was proposed, at least kinda administratively, and then, you know, where we, you know, made some of those adjustments. And, you know, we'll have the benefit of looking at their total budget, their operating budget. But, you know, just like with ours as an example, we're able to kinda, you know, allocate or move around to account for the requests, um, that we have with our own operating budget.
I just recall hearing, um, thank you for that response, hearing, um, you know, the public speaking for the request. But also, um, city staff saying that, I don't know, it seemed like our bid or the dollar amount that we got for lawn.
Lawn maintenance.
Maintenance was the same as Seer Hill, like, and they're a lot bigger. So I don't know, we might need some new bids. Where, I mean, comparatively, comparatively, if we paid the same as, like, I don't know the, s- with like twelve square miles?
Twelve, almost, square mile.
Right.
Oh, I think he said the increase, like we both received the same percentage increase, not the same rate.
He say percentage increase?
Yeah, not the same, we're not paying the same rate as Seer Hill.
Okay, he said percent, okay, I missed that percentage, I was like, oh.
Yeah. We're way too, yeah, less smaller, yeah.
So I was like, kinda concerned about that, so.
My understanding is that they've seen a, a large increase, the industry standard in lawn maintenance. And then comparing, discussing it with other communities, they've, they've shared with them that they've seen the same increase that we've seen. Uh, now before the board makes a, a, a motion, I just wanna let you know that this is what we recommend. We, the request was over four hundred thousand, here's what we re- recommended in order to balance the budget now. The board can choose to provide them the full amount, but that's fine. But then we would have to go back to the budget and we just have to make adjustments somewhere along the way. That is an option. Um, but this is what staff is, is recommending. That has been communicated to Parks and Rec, they would have to go back and look back at their budget. It's how they make up that, uh, that dollar amount difference in their budget. But at least they can move forward with counting on this level of participation.
I appreciate the clarification to know that that was considered, cause that is a big difference. And since we do have, uh, public here to speak in favor, just wanna make sure that that's an attainable goal for them and that we're not necessarily a barrier. So I appreciate you, um, at least having that additional information, and thank you for the clarification on the percentage. Cause I was like, what? So thank you for that comment.
Okay, so I think we're at the point now where it's been motion and seconded, so we will do a roll call.
Avney?
Hi.
Zoka?
Yes.
Savage? Tonsen? Payne? Harvey?
Yes.
Mister Harvey? For, um, staff, um, I think one of the things these items may bring to us is a cash flow, analysis of how our revenues are coming in versus our expenditures. Because if we have to provide all this funding in October, or we can have an ample amount of reserves to make those payments and contributions, or they can put limitations on that we can give them half in October and half six months down the road, or something like that, just some sort of analysis, so we know.
Oh, we can give them a twelfth each month? So, we, we control that.
Yeah, but we, we do need to be, like to see a report of our cash flow, the balances, how we're doing.
Okay.
If that's feasible from the county.
All right, so when you say, uh, cash flow balances, in other words, this is how much cash we got in the bank?
This is correct.
Okay.
And what are expected remaining payments are gonna be per month going out the rest of our budget here.
A cash flow projection?
Well, we're making obligations for a lot of things, and we, we need to make sure that as we make those obligations, that we have sufficient funds coming in.
Cause the revenue doesn't all come on October one.
It may not.
Hey, I don't think you can make that.
And neither, but, but, uh, members of the board, neither, neither does, when we do the budget, it's a guess. Because we don't know what the ta- you pass the tax rate. We have no idea, cause we collect that money, uh, at least on tax money, we collect it. Probably from, basically from November first through January thirty-first, we get the lion's share of that money. Yours is sprinkled throughout the year. So that attribution has to be, that's what the finance department, Mister Harvey, can comment on that, being a longtime finance director in the city. Just because we budget it doesn't mean we necessarily have it. And, but as we do obtain it, I think you're correct, assuming that the actual money will be paid into the city throughout the year, at probably on a quarterly basis. For Mister, um, uh, Zalaka's, uh, concern, we'll know with that, that quarterly report that when we receive that payment, and then we're usually around sixty days from the time we actually collect it, and how much we have, so that's the finance department. We'll have to appropriately administer that and give a report to Victor to share with y'all.
Yes, yeah, we can do that.
And that's all I know about finance, Victor.
I know even less than that in law. Can't even give you a good sentence. Okay. Uh, s- so I think we are through agenda item number five. It takes us to agenda item number six, other business. And let's see.
It's the new A.
Yeah.
Former F.
Yeah, so, uh, so now what we're going to talk about is discussion and board action on approval of sole source procurement with Olson Planning and Design. Mister Victor?
Thank you very much and good evening. Um, I cheer with you that the reason why we're here, we're asking for consideration of a sole source procurement with Olson Planning and Design. Olson Planning and Design is a planning firm that we initially, we, the Economic Development Department, uh, in conjunction with the Planning Department, which we were providing, uh, support at the time, hired Olson to assist the city with, with the review of the development plans for the proposed life school. We asked them to conduct a thorough zoning analysis, uh, what was the best route in which to handle, um, the project moving forward through the public hearing process. Uh, we had a work order, what I would refer to as a work order number one, that was prepared and executed specifically for this task. And then, uh, after that, uh, uh, that relationship that was started, we then had, organization-wise, we had a need for, uh, additional planning support. We unfortunately experienced in the planning, uh, side, uh, departure of, of key staff members. And at that time, we had, um, there was an urgency to provide the general public with the same level of service, both in-person The general public with the same level of service, both in person and remotely. To review permit applications, occupancy applications, and process zoning applications. Through that, um, hearing, uh, through that entitlement process, and so over the course of the last several months. Olson, uh, has been not only, uh, been assisting the city with the review of the life school plans. But they have been providing, uh, support, uh, to the city, uh, uh, until the, the positions have been filled. We have one position that has been filled, uh, already, that is the assistant, uh, planning director position. Um, and we are looking, actively working on filling the second position, which is the planner, uh, planner one role. Which we have marketed, but in the meantime, we continue to use their service. To provide, uh, the city, our residents, our applicants with the level of planning support that is needed. Now, all that said, that has come, uh, at a cost, uh, we have been able to use the. Savings from the planning vacancies and transfer that over, have those savings transferred over to pay the consultant for. Uh, for their, uh, services, and we are also seeking, uh, reimbursement from the applicant for life school for the use. Of third party consultants, um, but that, needless to say, those two combined still leave. Um, a, a difference, if you will, and that right now for the time being, that difference is coming out of the department's. Uh, contractual services, uh, we anticipate, uh, concluding our relationship with Olson at the end of this fiscal year. Uh, at this time, based on the information that is known, we anticipate, uh, having all in expense of about two hundred thousand dollars. For the use of this, uh, planning firm to provide the city, uh, the level of planning support that was needed over the course of the last. Uh, few months, so why this is before you is because, uh, we need to have this sole source procurement approved, uh, and this is also. Uh, going to be on the next, uh, council agenda for their formal consideration and approval, so we can get this, uh, this consultant paid. For all the services that they have rendered, uh, throughout the course of the last several weeks and or months.
So. I've heard of life school. But every time I've heard. Of life school, it's with planning and zoning. And council. I didn't know. Life school was. Connected with economic development. So, I mean, they. This situation in planning is. Basically being caused by. A project that they're working on. That up until now. We didn't have anything to. To do with, this is the first time I've heard of life school. In the context of this population. And so. I guess I'm just wondering. Cause I never heard in the meetings that I attended on life school. I never heard any mention of. Economic development benefits that would come. From having. Life school. Maybe there are economic development benefits, but that wasn't an economic development meeting, that was a. Planning and zoning meeting and a council meeting, so maybe someone admitted. To say that in those venues, so now that we are talking about it. Then what are the economic development benefits? I guess from a thirty thousand foot level globally that come from. A life school?
Sure, so just to provide a little bit of information, maybe to help provide, um, and put some context into the matter. Um, prior to contracting Olson Planning and Design, uh, for the review of the. Development plans associated with, uh, life school, the economic development team. Uh, and a few staff members from the team, uh, had been providing and were providing over the course of several months. Uh, planning support, um, and by way of support, meaning that they were assisting, the economic development team was assisting the planning staff. In meeting with, uh, applicants, processing zoning, uh, zoning cases. Um, assisting with zoning inquiries, and it was during that time that there was a, a need for additional assistance. In reviewing a project of this scale, so the economic development team has been, uh, up until recently providing. Or was providing the planning staff with, uh, support over the course of the last several months. That's kinda how the economic development team was involved, yeah, uh, with Olson, with planning. Uh, because we have been providing support, uh, for that team for several months until we recently were able to fill the vacancies. And now we are in a position where we're now, uh, able to focus, uh, a bit more on economic development. So for, over the course of the last several months, we have been, uh, doing economic development and planning. Uh, with, at that time, with the planning staff that was in place, and then after their depart- departure, we. As the team provided the level of support as we could, as best as we could, uh, while still, still continuing to provide economic development. Uh, support, but it really came to a point that with what we had, it wasn't enough and we needed to bring some additional, uh, assistance. I hope that kinda helps kinda paint the picture of what happened and why we are where we are.
Any other questions from board members? You have questions?
Yeah, I guess I'm a little confused about with the clarity of, what's the separation for what was past expenses versus. What are your proposed expenses for the rest of this calendar year?
Well, we have an, an understanding of what we project to be the, um, expenses moving forward to the end of, of the fiscal year. Um, and we are been working with the finance team to get as much as we can out of the planning. Uh, savings and salary and then seek the reimbursements, uh, from the applicant for the life score. Um, but there is without a doubt the balance that will have an impact on, on the department's, uh, end balance.
Okay, we have, uh, city management wants to weigh in.
Thank you, okay, again, I'm Mark Rauscher, I'm the, uh, Assistant City Manager here over. Community Services, which includes planning, economic development, parks and rec and so forth. And, yeah, I've been here, uh, almost two months now, and, you know, obviously, as, as Victor said. In the planning department, there was a lot of turnover, you know, they, they virtually had no staff. Coming into the spring and, and really, they weren't able to hire somebody until May, and that's the system, uh, planning director that Victor looked into. So we have her on board right now, and then we're currently advertising for the planner one position. But outside of that one person, that, that's your planning department right now, and so as Victor said, you know. ED staff, they were helping to supplement that as best as they could, um, or since, going back to, uh, late last year, actually. Um, Olson came on board, I believe it was in the March timeframe, February, March timeframe, you know, with.
For the additional support. Yes, we originally hired, uh, Olson to provide, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay, um, but for the additional planning support, you know, a lot of that ramped up in the early spring, late winter, early spring. And they, they've still been assisting, you know, uh, Costco was in here recently for, for a DRC and, you know, they've got a little project, and then there are. Several other, um, you know, restaurant and, and, and other retail projects that are coming through the pipeline, and so Olson has been facilitating with that. Um, at the DRC, at, at the P and Z, you know, they'll do the staff reports and do the presentations and so forth, and frankly, without them. You know, we couldn't have kept the ball rolling down the field over the last few months, um, so as Victor said, you know. We, we utilize Olson to kinda, you know, enable the city to provide the same level of services that. Everybody has expected, you know, to receive going back over the years, and so. Our intention is to wean ourselves off of this contract at the end of this fiscal year, but. You know, it takes a little while to, you know, advertise and interview and then get new employees on board and, you know, hopefully we'll have this planner one. On board by the end of August, and then, um, we're looking at some other options too with staffing to further augment internally. The planning function, um, but for now, Olson is, is kinda the, the only game in town, so to speak, and, and, um. You know, a lot of times planning and ED are, are interrelated, um, and, you know, so we really feel like this is a, um, national nexus here. Um, for Olson's services, um, to be paid for from the, for B fund.
Pat- Patrick, if I might, I, I think though, your question is, and, and maybe there was some confusion, uh, when it was presented. It's life school ate up all of our funding. For. Community development, money attributable under our contract with you all to provide administrative services. And since that ate up all that money, we were now short on using our planning department. To do economic development projects through the Hilton or the Toyota property. Through other people that have come to town. Recently and through the end of the year, to eat up those, um, uh, administrative cost dollars. That the economic development department would attribute normally, under normal circumstances. Uh, as part of our economic development team, so really what you're funding is not the life school work. It's the fact that life school ate up a lot of our administrative funding with you all. Because of that project, and it's just cause of the nature of the project, the, the political intrigue involved in that project. And the public's interest in that project, and the uniqueness of that project, so what you're really being asked to fund. Is additional funding to help with economic development. Clients that have come to Duncanville, uh, so that we've got, uh, planning support. For your economic development. Mission, thank you.
So, so, l- l- let me say, let me say this. And, and you've heard me say this in the past, how in a previous life. Long time ago. Uh, I was working in finance. As a finance director, and. Like, for example. I worked with the city of Segovia. And so the city of Segovia was, was a growing community. Uh, but they didn't have. Uh, a planner full time, so. The way that they would work it out is that they would hire a planning firm. And you know the name of the firm that I'm, that I'm talking about, counselor, I can't remember their name right now, but they were all, they would work in different cities. They were kinda like this, they kinda like this Olson, and so, um. The, what would happen is, the, the city in their fee structure. Said, okay, if you, if we have to use a third party. To review your situation, then we are gonna charge you. What Olson is charging us, plus, you know, ten percent or whatever it was they kicked in for administrative. And so, now that's the way it used to be done, so now. If I understand correctly, uh, you know, and I'm not, I'm not asking you per se, I'm just, you know, city staff is here. H- how does, how does it work now if we, if we hire a, a third party? Do we not set the fee so that it covers? The third party service?
We have traditionally not done that, Mr. Harvey, um. Yeah, I think it's something that city staff has seriously considered as they move through the budget to echo Ms. Hubert's concerns. Uh, a way of recouping money as a result of applications. For many years, city of Duncanville didn't even have a planning component, um, but it's almost a necessary. Uh, staff position, uh, especially for the city that seeks to redevelop, to have those people available to us. And so I would think in the future, the city would have to seriously consider whether or not that pass through cost. Needs to be part of our fee structure for zoning applications in the future.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Mr. Hager.
I'm, and, and I'm not advocating anything, I was just clarifying from what I was hearing, so.
No, M- Mr. Hager, thank you, and we have had actually discussions about creating a process and what that would all entail. Uh, which it involves an amendment to the subdivision ordinance to create, uh, what I'm used to is they call it a reimbursement of fees agreement. Where the applicant puts in money into an escrow account, um, and then every month the applicant is invo- is sent an invoice for the services. Uh, rendered by the use of third party consultants, uh, oftentimes it's, yes, it can be a planner, it can be an engineering firm, it could be a, uh. Uh, finance company to look at, uh, needs assessment, economic impact, all of that by way of this agreement. The applicant would, uh, take responsibility for ream- for the reimbursement of those costs, on top of it, you could put in a. Dollar amount or percentage for administrative costs, uh, we have been discussing that importantly right now, that kinda system, that kinda process is not in. The city ordinances. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, um, the city that I most recently came from, we actually had a engineering plan review fee. In our fee schedule, and so as, as plans would come in the door, we were able to charge, I believe it was a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. Um, you know, charge the applicant back that, that cost, and obviously that would help us, help us here, and that's something that we've gotta look at with our, our fee schedule.
Yes, Mrs. Oak.
Unfortunately, my question wasn't answered, how much was past charges and how much are future charges?
So I think.
Fall, fall part.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at the invoices that we already have, um, from Olson, I believe it's, I believe it's around eighty or ninety thousand dollars. Uh, for the staff augmentation fees, and then we were thinking that, you know, we. We gradually wean ourselves off of them, you know, in August and then for sure in September, cause right now, you know, there are three staff persons from Olson. That are helping us, um, one of those is, you know, uh, a lot more expensive than, than the others, but. Uh, in terms of hourly fees, but, um, I think we were estimating that we might accrue as much as another, you know. Seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars, you know, for the remainder of, um, September.
So twenty-five to. Forty-five thousand a month?
Yeah, give, give, yeah, cause we've estimated it's, it's around, I think it was sixty-seven hundred dollars a, a week. So if you, if you round up seven thousand a week, that's twenty-eight thousand dollars a month, um, in fees.
Okay, did, did that answer your question, okay, any other questions from the board? Yes?
So would any of this go away with the hiring of a staff?
Yes, so, um, you know, once we get our new planner on board and then we're also looking at an existing permit. Tech position and, and looking at, at transforming that into what we're calling a planning assistant, that could also help with, you know, intake of new projects. Um, answering questions about zoning and, and land use and so forth, and so by having those three positions in place. We, we, we no longer will need Olson's services, um, so we have one position in place now, the second one's currently being advertised. And then the, the third one, we're reworking it right now and hope, hope to get that advertised here in the next, you know, couple of weeks. Um, and then have all, you know, the remaining two positions filled, um, you know, by early September, early to mid September at the latest.
And so the ask now is for?
To finish the, to finish the fiscal year, um, to continue the use of, of this consultant, to finish, to continue to provide, and I'm sorry. To continue to provide the level of planning support, we're, we're diligently working on filling the vacancies. Uh, once they're hired, we talk, you know, the goal is to, uh, to offboard them by the end of this fiscal year. There may be the possibility moving forward that the city may use the services of planning firm, maybe it's Olson, maybe it's another firm. For the review of development plans, but our hope is that when we do that, that we would have. The fee structure in place to seek reimbursement, and in that scenario, we would still need to pro- put money in the budget. To account for the use of that, uh, service, but now we have the mechanisms to seek the reimbursement for those costs.
But now we have the mechanisms to seek the reimbursement for those costs.
So are there budget implications for this end?
Uh yes, because it's it's um to continue, to continue the service at the end of the fiscal year. The economic development uh fund is being uh is being impacted. Uh like there has been a, there's a transfer of funds from the salary savings. And hopefully we are able to get some reimbursement from the life school on the cost of services. But you're still gonna have, you're still gonna have a difference that's right now hitting our contact, our uh contractual services in uh budget.
That's like not really the life, it's in in addition to the life school.
It's addition, yes.
It's not all life.
No, um. No, no, um with that, um depending on how you look at it, it's a good, better, indifferent. We have seen a high level of interest in projects, in investment in the community. Um opening of a business that has involved quite a bit of planning assistance technique. There was uh here recently at the last uh planning and zoning uh planning and zoning commission uh meeting, there were several zone, seven cases. Public hearing cases that were to be presented. Uh so the volume has uh increased from what we've seen, um say, even in the last twelve months. Uh so that's, that's a good sign, but in order to provide that level of service and keep up with with the inquiries, we really needed. Uh an assistance of 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 a team and Olson was able to provide us the level of support. Uh when we needed them and has still been able to uh to provide us. But again, uh that does come, not gonna deny the fact that that does come at a, at a price, at a cost. Um and we are, we do have a plan to kind of move away from that into something that's more cost-effective. But in the meantime, we still need these applications to be processed, uh the the cases to be presented and take them to the entitlement process. Uh because we s- we are still short-staffed. I'm sorry.
Have the expected fees been taken out of, already been considered in the budget? Or will it take away that surplus that that was there?
Well, this is, this uh request is, was an unbudgeted, unplanned item. So what we're doing is we're trying to finish the fiscal year strong. And like I said, moving forward as you saw on the budget, we did not account for this kind of level of support and planning. This is, as I'll describe it, this is a one-off, this was a unique situation and the circumstances were such that we needed to provide. The community with the level of planning support that at the time we just weren't able to. And continue with economic development and planning, we we were very much spread thin.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Could we? Could we um? Could we consider this in conjunction with? If we agree to help the city, the city will in turn within. The first six months of the new fiscal year have. An amended fee structure to cover. To cover unplanned. Unplanned excessive services.
Sure.
General fund.
So I think what the key really is, is to, is to update our master fee schedule so that we do have that engineering plan review fee in place. Um and then that way, if if in the future, we gotta call on the services of a special. Um type, architecture firm, planning firm, engineering firm, you name it, then we have that mechanism to be able to, you know, claw back that reimbursement. Um and so I think that that's our responsibility as we get ready to adopt the new budget is to make sure that fee structure is in place for FY twenty-six. So we don't repeat what's happening right now in FY twenty-five.
I I'll, I'll say, anybody else?
Should it be a share call?
Well, I let, let me, let me tell you.
Sounds like there's no funding anywhere else.
Yeah, there, there, there's, there's, there's going to be, the 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 general fund is is going to. Uh take up some of the funding be- because.
So we are reallocating, working with the budget, the city's budget office, we are reallocating seventy thousand dollars in salary savings and the planning budget.
Yes.
To help offset this cost, but as as Victor said, you know, that seventy thousand is not gonna cover everything. You know, we're currently working with life school, you know, to get some reimbursement from them as well, that that'll help. Uh but at the end of the day, you know, we we're gonna need some support from, from the EDC to help, help with this. Um as I said before, a lot of these projects do do have an economic development aspect to them because, you know, these. We keep saying we're open for business here in Duncanville, we're, we're really trying to promote redevelopment in the city as Mr. Hager said and and. But you know, the only way that we can really do that is if we have a a responsive planning function. And right now we got, we have the one person, but you know, she's stretched pretty thin as it is, and if she's out sick or vacation or whatever. Then, you know, without Olson, we we don't, we don't have any resources, so. That that's the situation we find ourselves in, but we're, we're trying to claw out, and that's why we got a position posted, we're working on a third um in the meantime.
The, the, isn't it true that we have a current administrative grant from the EDC to the city?
No, that's something that we're looking to to formalize in that um administrative uh agreements.
Right, we don't currently have one?
No.
So this is just another grant application in essence for administrative costs?
We could roll that into, into something like that to end the fiscal year.
Well, I, it says discussion and board action on approval of the sole source procurement with Olson. Uh Olson is not being procured by the EDC, it's really being procured by the city. We are just giving them grant money to help them cover those costs.
Yeah, that's.
Triple to EDC related activity, i.e. zoning applications for businesses.
Yes, that's where we could use your guidance on, on how do we handle this uh unique situation?
So, uh what I would ask the board to do based on what you have is actual. Consider a grant in the amount of blank to the city to cover administrative costs. For uh planning services on economic development clients. And then I just need to know what the amount is. That they're willing to fund.
Mr. Hager, if you don't mind, just logistically, how would we work that out? Because right now our de- our department is being asked to, to pay for those invoices.
Yeah, but who's your check from? The city, right?
Yeah, so I.
Check from the EDC, you get a check from the city, so the city pays for economic development staffing. Through this mechanism. Because you're an employee of the city, are you not?
Sure.
Okay, so what EDC has traditionally done in an informal way is approved the budget from last year. That attributed a certain amount of salary. To employ you and other people that are in your department. So in this case. We've employed, we, the city have employed a planning and design professional to assist us. The city. And therefore, in in the case of economic development clients with economic development. Um customers. Prospects. Uh with the planning elements that are needed for. Whatever economic development, you know, and many times they have to get SUP, they have to have zoning changes. Uh they. Look at facade grants for us in terms of whether or not it's aesthetic, the building official's office. All those professionals, that's what that administrative fee that you approved earlier in general administration does. So you're actually asking for an amendment to last year's contribution for administrative. And an amount of money to cover the cost of the city's hiring of Olson planning and design.
Okay, appreciate the guidance.
And and I think we need to work with the city's budget office too, because there, there might be some, some other salary savings that we could, we could look at, but. I think at the end of the day, you know, Mr. Hager, you're, you're, you're on the right, right track here, you know, as far as how we, you know, paper this up for FY twenty-five. And in order to get, get these invoices paid for the life school and staff augmentation, the planning and economic development staffs.
So how old are the invoices?
April, I think, is the, April, May.
Oh, that's a long time, yeah.
Yeah, it's a long time.
So we do it like contingent? Receiving whatever the difference is with salaries, I don't know how we can move forward, because I know it needs to be done. I just don't understand how we move forward from here to.
So I think some of those, the smaller amounts can be paid, but you know, there, once we, once we hit the fifty thousand dollar threshold, that has to go to, go to city council. And that's, that's why we're here today, to have the EDC essentially recommend approval. For the invoices above the fifty thousand dollar threshold, so that we can then take that to council on August fifth. And get, and get that approved as well, and then all those invoices can be paid.
But I, I, I see what Attorney Hager is saying, there's a, there's a way that the city accounts for. Relationship that it has with the, these employees who are city employees. So, so there's a way that 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 happens, so I don't know if it's.
But what, what is, let me ask Mr. Harvey, let me ask uh staff. What's the outstanding, how much money are you asking for tonight? So you can do whatever it is we need to do on August fifth, Thompson.
I don't, I know there's a, there's an email chain, but we were looking at um roughly two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and six thousand if I, if I recall correctly. Um to help cover these costs. And again, as I mentioned earlier, you know, the budget office is working to uh reallocate seventy thousand in salary savings to the planning department. You know, towards these invoices, and so I think that's really just the delta there that we're, we're looking for, so somewhere in the neighborhood.
Why don't they consider approval of an amount not to exceed for actual uh cost? And then we'll have budget, say, we all ended up using X and whatever isn't used gets returned to EDC. That's what the EDC is struggling with, they don't know how much to allocate, and they don't want to allocate money for you to. Pay out when you don't have to, and if there's any savings as a result of reallocating city money. That any unused portion comes back to the EDC and I would assume that EDC wants some accounting of where their money is from.
Sure, I think that's fair.
So, so, so um. So you, you provided us an estimate of like twenty-eight thousand a month, right? So the invoices that we have. Uh cover a certain period. And, and then we estimate. Based on twenty-eight thousand a month, that period that hasn't been covered, then we know what that is, and then we're saying not to exceed that amount.
And tha- and that's the forecast forward, but here again in September, we shouldn't need to have all three Olson stat numbers. You know, we should at least be able to hopefully get rid of two out of those.
And that's, and that's why the attorney is saying, you know, uh basically give you an amount now. And then at the end of the year, we'll have a true-up. And then whatever is left over comes back to the EDC.
Right.
So. So would you allocate approximately a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars, knowing that seventy is coming from salary savings? And we're estimating to close out the fiscal year with this, with this consultant at two oh six.
Is that a question to the board?
Well, I'm putting it out there just to see if that's, if that has any level of support.
So I, I think that's why I'm confused there, because I thought we only had a hundred and nine thousand dollars left from twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, and that's, that's the challenge for us, is we've been looking at our budget line item, seeing what we can and can't do, and what we're not gonna be able to do to finish. To finish the year, and we're looking at our, our marketing budget, we're looking at.
So I think she, she's referring to twenty fiscal year twenty-six.
Oh, no, that's.
Yeah, this is all fiscal year twenty.
This is all for twenty-five.
It's totally separate from the presentation you saw.
Okay, so twenty-five still has more in surplus?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, so we shouldn't be, be utilizing Olson in FY twenty-six, which is the, the budget, you know, that you looked at earlier today.
Okay, so then what's the surplus for twenty twenty-five right now?
Um I know we have, you know, the budget office is looking at the incentives line item in the EV budget, and there's quite a bit in there.
There is.
Definitely enough to cover the one, one thirty-six that we're talking about today.
So those are funds that were not spent, is it?
Correct.
That are funds in our budget.
That's not.
Wait, do we have that in here?
No, that's why I'm confused. Yeah, I think it's a, we're all like five hundred.
The twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Year-to-date.
I believe that was sent out as part of the, the regular budget updates year to, year-to-date. Like over last week?
Yeah, I was thinking it's carryover.
And I think that makes.
Okay, I know what I was gonna say.
This is a next year. Yes, yeah, that's.
No, I, I think the financials, you all sit out as a separate task.
But that's, but that's not.
It's not twenty twenty-five, it's twenty twenty-six. It's the proposed and then the proposed summary.
Correct.
It was July twenty-fourth.
Was there, is there?
That isn't one of the financial reports included.
I see.
Those are the financial reports that were sent out for uh for main station.
Gotcha.
Where was the administration? Is that this year?
We got a budget summary, so administration, that's gonna be our first one, proposed budget.
Okay, it's up here, personnel?
Personnel is a category under administration.
Okay.
Yeah. But again, this is, that's your proposed budget for next fiscal year, they're talking about the current fiscal year. Current operating budget, that's already.
No, right, no, I understand, I was just trying to see what it is going forward and how these two.
I think you're uh referring to in the budget detail summary. That was provided, there is the. Amount that's provided to the city and. Right here. These are the amounts.
Okay.
We have that for twenty-five. That is, it's separate from the admin personnel costs.
Again, any, any personnel or admin costs wouldn't be specific to the EDC's budget. They're talking about is capturing savings from the planning and development services budget, and that's correct.
That, that's where the seventy thousand dollars is coming from.
To take the two down to one.
One thirty, one thirty-six, so the one thirty-six we're looking at for the current fiscal year, if we're gonna have this level of participation. Where and how we move money from specific line items in our budget. To accommodate that level of participation, and that may mean that we may have less grant money available. For the remainder of the fiscal year. Or less money in contractual services to just finish the year in the black. Next year is a completely new slate, like I said, we're gonna have a different uh, different situation. This is just, as I say, a unique situation, a one-off, that we're just, we're trying to finish off the fiscal year uh as best as we can and, you know, move on.
And there's sufficient funding in the incentives line item, you know, for FY twenty-five. That would cover two hundred thousand, because initially we were looking at like two oh six, but we found the seventy from the planning department's budget. So now we just need the one thirty-six, and there was enough, according to the budget office, there was enough um capacity in that line item to cover. Of that one thirty-six for Olson in this fiscal year's budget.
So the way forward would be to provide the, the city with an amount not to exceed a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars to assist with mitigating the extra costs from planning.
Correct.
Okay.
And Mr. Hager, if I may, um, I think you said also to clarify, um, what Kevin Harvey is saying, was your, uh, suggestion to amend the, um, fiscal year twenty five as far as the transfer to the general fund? The amount at the EDC?
Yeah, I, I've written out the motion would be to amend the twenty four, twenty five annual budget and funding from D C E D C to the city of Duncanville, an amount not to exceed a hundred and sixty, a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars with a clawback provision of any unused funds.
With a clawback provision for, for any unused funds? So, are we prepared to, to consider a motion to approve or disapprove?
No, I have a couple of questions, I'm sorry. I guess if we did give this money, is there any expectation of reimbursement back?
Well, you know what?
No.
Because it's a grant, and it's, it's.
That's what the clawbacks provisions for, but you're buying services, so there's nothing other than unused money to clawback.
No, but we're paying for services this year, but there's, we're foregoing opportunities to give paint grants, sign grants, because that money's spent.
Oh, I understand, uh, you only got so much money and there's a budget, I'm saying, I show you have a reserve.
No, if, if I may, there may be, as we mentioned earlier, there may be the opportunity that we might be reimbursed some of that, one thirty six, by the applicant for life school, but even in that scenario, whatever we reimburse would not be the full, a hundred thirty six dollar, dollar amount, because we didn't use that level of service for that project. But there is some money that we could recoup, and we're working on that.
So, any other questions? Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve or not approve this particular funding request.
I guess I would approve it with a limited amount to give staff time to get more transparency on what are the past dollars, and what are the future dollars, expectations, and then come back to us, and then let us decide and have tighter numbers, what that delta is, because right now, we're gonna give, if we were to give them a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars, to me, that's a payment that they could just go out and spend and use, based on what, they're not gonna refund us anything back. Unless they don't spend it, if they only spend ninety, then they'd give us forty five thousand dollars back.
Maybe we can, maybe we can table it until we get the numbers necessary to understand.
Well, I think the, the need, from what I'm hearing, is that there's invoices outstanding, kinda like Star Transit. Is there a way that we, as a board, and I would maybe make a motion of seventy five thousand to allow them to address some older things that are pending to keep us in good standing in the business community, and give them time to get a little bit of a detailed report, cause the request to me is very vague, and that's just my opinion. Um, if they can come back with, okay, here's where these past dollars of the seventy five are gonna be going towards, and here's what's remaining, and here's what's expected for the rest of the fiscal year, then they come back at next month's meeting and get the rest of it with more detailed transparency, cause I think the, the community with our dollars would like to, a little more transparency versus just a vague, we need about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So you quoted the number of seventy five thousand, so you're good with giving the city that, uh, amount now, and then if there's any more required.
They go back and tighten that up.
Yeah, show us the numbers.
Is that for, for the city?
I mean, it'll, it'll enable us to at least pay the, the past due invoices and get that cleaned up, and then I, I think we're just gonna have to work really hard over the next two months to get off of this.
No, I understand.
You know, contract, because I, I don't know that there'll be any additional monies out there to continue to pay.
But it gives you time to see what your staffing level's gonna be, and what, what your needs are gonna be versus the vague request. And that's, I think, from me as the board person, is that vagueness of, we know there are dollars that are needed for the community, and they are helping with businesses, but it's just, I don't have an issue with that, I have an issue with what that dollar amount is and the transparency, that, that's how much is going towards that. Versus more, as a more specific ask, so that's why I would motion seventy five thousand, to allow them to clear up those past invoices and bring us those details of where that seventy five thousand's going, and then what the delta is for what they anticipate for the rest of the year.
And you are expressing that in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Can't give you that.
I'll second the motion, cause I do wanna make sure we pay what's currently due, and we're able to still move forward.
So it's been popular motion and second, uh, this.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Right?
Right, 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 absolutely.
Yes, I just thought you had something to say, that's all I was.
So are we, um, just, are we confident that the seventy five thousand is, will get us past the?
On past two invoices?
The past two invoices, do you have any?
Yeah, that in combination with, you know, the salary savings number that I mentioned earlier, the, in the planning budget, which was seventy grand, that will enable us to, to pay off all the, the past due invoices, and maybe, maybe cover us for part of the month of August here as well. And then after that, you know, just based on the forecasts, you know, we're, we're probably not gonna be able to keep, keep Olson on board, you know, that far into September.
The one seventy five that's there, is that, what is that number?
Which number?
There's a number here listed, it, it says, uh, total estimated cost of these services expected to exceed a hundred and seventy five thousand, which was partially covered by salary savings from the vacant positions. So you had seventy from the vacant, and it's seventy five, so that's one.
Hundred and five thousand.
Yeah, that's about one forty five.
Oh, one forty five.
Yeah.
So it's about. It's about thirty thousand less than what's there, but you know, it, it's a, it's a good start, and I think, you know, we'll just have to really work hard to wean off Olson probably sooner than we had planned.
And so the two oh nine, what was that number?
That's a, that's an estimated projection of, based on what we have, that's, that's an estimated projection based on the level of service that we use them at the rate that we're currently at, given all the applications, given the amount of hours that we've seen them put in over the course of the last several weeks. That was the forecast through September. That, of, you know, what we've seen over the last few weeks, and multiply that by the remaining weeks in the fiscal year, that gives us an estimated projection of what, um, the, uh, fiscal year will, will look like with this, uh, consultants.
And then the last thing, um, so we just kinda kept spending? Like we, we, we just kept going with them without the money there?
Well, I, you know, again, we had, we had the life school project, and then we had the staff augmentation, and you know, this, this whole relationship with Olson kinda took, you know, a few different ebbs and, and flows, but, you know, we realized a month ago, okay, we, we really gotta, you know, come up with a spending plan and a way to pay for it, and, and then work to fill positions, and then, you know, end this contract arrangement, because we can't, you know, it's too expensive to keep doing this, you know, seven thousand dollars a week, you know, sixty, seven hundred a week, you know, we can't keep, keep operating that way, so that's why we're actively trying to fill positions and, and then end this contract, so that, you know, we're able to just rely on in-house staffing resources. And if need be, we need specialties, resources, as we said earlier, we can then look at bringing in an outside consultant firm, but we gotta have our fee schedule updated to enable us to charge those back.
Thank you for your response, appreciate that, I know you're kinda new to the.
Yes, of course, ma'am.
They had already been spending when you came in, Robert, and so. Just to acknowledge that, but just, I appreciate, you know, trying on that, so.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, that was just kinda my question.
Okay.
You ready for roll call?
Yes.
Abby. Soka.
Yes.
Savage. Thompson.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes. Okay, so I believe the next item on the agenda is board discussion and possible a form of a vice president. And I want to recommend that we table this one, uh, until we are all here present. Yes, let's formalize it.
Oh, you have to devote to table, or?
Six.
Uh, I would need to. Aye.
Attorney Hager.
Yes, sir.
We want to, we want to table a particular item on the agenda, do we have to take a formal vote?
No, you do not, you can just move on to the next agenda, even unless someone else to challenge you.
Okay. Okay, discussion and board action on final draft of B C E D C scholarship policy, staff.
No, we were gonna be discussing item six B, the grant policy.
Right, he said scholarship, that's what I was asking.
Oh, yeah. The incentive and grant policy.
Yes, discussion and board action on final draft of B C E D C incentive and grant policy, sorry.
Thank you, we're, uh, bringing this back, uh, in response to, uh, your requests from the last meeting to table, uh, upon the revisions that were, uh, proposed. So, again, this, this is just reiterating what was presented before, about the current policy that's in place, um, the revisions, and, um, the draft policy, which all of the revisions are in blue, which were provided in your packet. Again, this information was provided last time about some notable revisions in comparison to what was, um, currently in the policy, matching grant structure of, uh, fifty percent financial responsibility would remain with the applicant, um, implementing maximum grant award amounts per applicant and grant type, uh, participation requirements. These were some edits that were proposed upon, um, the six twenty three board meeting, um, the merger of some items and the removal of, uh, one of the sections for commercial residential demo redevelopment and reuse. And then post, uh, the, after the, uh, July ninth board meeting, the additional edits and revisions of the specific removal of, um, the participation requirement of a copy of the IRS letter of incorporation, and, um, noting that the sales tax and use certificate with keeping that requirement in there would then provide the information that we were kind of looking for, is just to confirm that that business did have a, um, state tax, um, ID, and that confirming that they are paying sales tax. Again, the, uh, application period would be new, um, for each fiscal year between December first and March first, and this application period, uh, being specifically for the design incentive grants, which were the six types of design incentive grants, paint, uh, signage, landscape, facade, pavement, and infrastructure. Any questions or additional comments?
Where you were talking about paint and grant.
Yes, sir. So these six, um, grant items are under the category of design incentive grants. So under the grand umbrella of, um, D C E D C incentives, we have a category of design incentive grants that are specific to primarily our small businesses, but also eligible to any business of any size.
Okay, cause I thought we were just talking about sponsorships in the, in the item, um, what number is it?
It was actually, uh, I think Mr. Harvey mentioned it, but it was item six. Six, uh, what was originally six B on the agenda?
Six T, which would be the sponsorship policy.
No, incentive and grant. That'll be the next item on the agenda to be discussed, sir. No, you're fine.
Okay, so confused, I can go to the top here. So in the agenda, we're looking at what was item?
Six, six D. Six C now?
Correct. Because, because the Olson was F, and it was A, and then the second thing we did was, um, the second thing we did was to, uh.
Table B?
Yeah.
Okay, so what was in the, our printed agenda, six C, discuss the board policy action, final draft of the EDC sponsorship policy. Is that not the one we're on?
Where?
That is not B.
That is D, okay, so you're on, what was six B, discussion of the board of the final draft of the EDC incentive and grant policy.
Yes, sir.
We moved the last, the last one to the front, and everything else moved down.
Okay, I'm sorry, cause I was looking for it in my packet.
No, it was my bad, I misspoke. I rearranged it, and then I'm popping out and I misspoke. So it's just a, unprintable for family meetings. And when, and when you, when you're at the location, we'll proceed with the presentation.
Okay, I can come right there.
And we discussed it last time, we just asked that it be implemented, so we could see the final.
Right, yes, it was originally presented, um, June twenty third, at the June twenty third meeting, and then again at the, um, July ninth meeting, and at that time, it was requested to see the changes made before the board would make the official vote to approve.
So, any questions or comments on that item? Yes.
On the page two of the staff report letter, um, it says the addition of participation requirements that include requirements of a business plan, a marketing plan, and a copy of the IRS le- letter of incorporation.
Yeah, I, I just kept what was already on there, based on the, for historical purposes. Yeah, I, I just kept what was already on there based on the, for historical purposes, but then uh. For history, but also noting that the revision based on the um, July ninth board meeting, what that feedback was.
I've always been a baseball player, I'm still.
Can we mute him? You know, I was like, is it an analogy? Take that out of his um.
Right, they can go towards that other grant.
Whatever he's charging, that's at least a fourth.
Okay.
So where, where did, and so the, the correction or the uh, update is.
So in the, uh, let's see.
Yeah, on, on page one or two, I think that second paragraph, it says.
So I took out the copy. And just left the.
Did that answer your question? Any other questions?
What if they don't have the Texas sales and use tax or two? You have to have a Texas use tax to do.
They have to be paying, so that's the main thing because these funds are from the sales tax. That's one of the other, um, not necessarily the requirements, but eligibility factors, um, so. Organizations that do not pay sales tax are not eligible to apply for grants. That are derived from sales tax. So primarily nonprofits. We did have one exception, um, but they were paying sales tax, it was a nonprofit organization. But they were requesting signage for their um, retail store. In which case, they did pay sales tax, so that made them eligible in that situation.
And they had the certificate?
We didn't have that requirement before, but that's one of the things that, again, just hoping to better vet businesses. Cuz most businesses have that hung up in their office or retail space. Already, um, so it wouldn't be asking them to go out of the way, we'd just ask for a copy of it.
Some businesses put them on the wall. Okay, any more questions? Alright, so the chair will then entertain a motion to approve or not approve.
A move that we approve the final draft of the uh, D C E D C incentive and grant policy.
So who is there a second?
I'm second.
Do we have some discussion?
Of course, we discuss it.
This is a quick item, uh, Victor's not here, maybe you probably know, one, once, this is a new. Um, policy that we're implementing, correct? So it's the type of policy that we can go for a year and then reevaluate it down the road. Make recommendations and changes, correct?
The policy, this policy is an existing policy, um, the proposed edits are revi- would be revisioned. Yes, but of course, in the future, we can always reevaluate to see if we need to add back or.
Yeah.
Make more revisions, yes.
Okay, so it's a living document.
Yes, sir.
More questions?
Abney.
Hi.
Sokka.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Payne.
Hi.
Harvey.
Approved. Okay, next item on the agenda, discussion and board action on final draft. Uh, D C E D C sponsorship policy. Staff.
Sorry, I think I got difficulties. Alright, so, um, again, this is another uh. Item that is being brought back before the board and um, in this case, the D C E D C sponsorship. Policy is a new policy, um, which did not exist before, we had um. Guidelines that were put in place with the application and I, it was. At that time, I'm sure the staff's attempt to try to just have some way of. Having eligibility requirements, um, but we did see in just some of the requests that we were receiving that we needed more clear cut. Um, evaluation criteria and participation guidelines, um, so that is where this policy came about. Um, again, some key highlights were adding a purpose statement, expanding the um. Clarifying eligibility criteria, um, giving more explanation on the application process. And those uh, types of considerations. And this was, and which is in, in your packet, or not was, is a copy of the um. Sponsorship request form. And the information that we request along with the guidelines, which um, the guidelines are what kind of. Started the framework for creating the policy, so there isn't anything on, in the policy that's not included here. And that was already in place. And based on the feedback from the July ninth board meeting, um, the proposed revisions were. Uh, adding that to the reporting requirement that future participation would be impacted. Um, addition of requests to provide uh, an employer identification number for tax verification. Under the eligibility criteria section and it was kind of duplicating item B, so that was removed as a result of. Adding that for which.
So traditionally, in the documentation process, it's usually. Policy than application, in this case, it was the application.
Yes, sir.
Any questions from staff, what was it?
I have one.
Yes.
What's the normal turnaround for these sponsorships, when someone fills out all the paperwork, gets it to you, what's the timeline? That they can know that it's going on?
We, right now, we've built in um, at least six weeks just to have time to review it because again, with. Not only the sponsorship requests that we're receiving and reviewing the um, grant requests, the incentive requests. And just having time to process everything and then. Um, and then given the timeline on when the request is received and the next D C E D C meeting, so example. If our packet has to go out on Wednesday, but someone turns in their packet the day before or their application. That it's not gonna be feasible for us to really do a deep review and um, get everything ready for the board to include in the packet. So that's why we add in that timeframe, but I think um, in the policy. Yeah, the, the application says to allow at least six weeks, um. But again, if we can make it happen sooner, then we will, um. But we definitely, if there's a situation where, you know, say for example, someone had an event happening in a week or two weeks, then. You know, we, we communicate that upfront that based on our timelines and the times it takes to prepare everything for the meetings and. To be able to uh, adequately review the application, we just need more time. But for the, uh, we've, we haven't really had any that are looking to get funding immediately. It's typically for a planned event that they know, an annual event or annual um, program, um, that they already know and. Anticipate, um, and in some cases, some cases, yes, they do require, they do not require, they rely on our funding to help. Offset their expenses, um, but in other situations, they. Know that our payment might come after the event has occurred based on, cuz it's not just. The approval process through D C E D C, but it also goes before council and then, once it's approved there, we have to go through our accounting. Department, if they're a current vendor, if they've received money from us, it makes it a little bit faster, if they haven't, we have to get them set up as a new vendor. Then getting their payment process, like even that in itself could take additional time. Hope I answered your question.
Okay, any questions for staff on that item? So at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to approve of this food. The final draft of the D C E D C sponsorship policy. Let everybody speak here, please.
And that we approve the final draft of the D C E D C sponsorship.
Thank you, Councilmember Savage, this motion is their second.
I second.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Board member.
Discussion.
He's a council member.
Well, you, you see, I don't know about the rest of you. I don't know about the rest of you, but there is a universal signal that you've stayed too long. And that universal signal is either one or two things, either they flicker the lights on or off, okay, or the cleaning.
I just forget it, I'm coming in. She's like, I can talk as long as.
I'm not responsible for what goes in this trash can after I leave. I'm just saying, so. So, uh. Next item on the.
Wait, we need to roll.
Discussion.
Discussion, okay. Is there any discussion?
I just have a clarification question, the, the motion is for the, the policy, do we need to include the application or is it already existing and no changes were there?
That's already existing, yes, no changes to the application.
The motion doesn't need it, thank you for clarifying that.
Any other discussion? So now, okay, now we're ready to have a roll call.
Okay. Abney.
Yes.
Sokka.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Thompson. Payne.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is discussion and board action on final draft of business retention and expansion. B R E program. A different staff.
What does it say? You say a different staff?
Different staff.
Yeah, I've been doing a little bit at tonight, right? Well, hello again, business retention and expansion program, I mean, that's a fancy way of. Organizations describe how you go about carrying out your business function. Day-to-day operation of department, for us, this, this is a framework that we've been talking about with this group for. You know, the better part, we'll say the first half of this year, um, formalizing what we've been doing all along. Um, and that being in the community, visiting, visiting with the existing businesses as a form of retention activity. Right, making what we describe as ambassador visits, where we hope to then discover or learn about the relative health. Of the various businesses in the community, right, of all types. As it relates to expansion, again, as part of those businesses, as part of that activity, part of that discovery. You hopefully get to identify which businesses maybe are prime for expansion, maybe they're already thinking about expansion. Having growing pains, et cetera, right, but part of this activity is how we discover that as opposed to waiting for them. Right, to call, email or knock on our proverbial doors to have those discussions. Right, and then the last component is attraction, right, how do we go after what seemingly. An undying list of desirable businesses that the community uh, would like to add to the local economy. Right, whether they be restaurants, whether they be general merchandise, uh, fill in the blank, right, and so business retention. Of the, of the existing businesses in the community, but also opportunities for expansion and then recruiting new uh, firms and, and companies. To the local economy, right, so when we look at uh, maybe some of the goals and objectives, we laying out. The focus areas, but also maybe how we uh, look to measure that activity and quantify. Right, so when we look at business retention, how do we know if, you know, our efforts are. Worth the time, right, if they're being effective, one target might be the business retention rate, like how many businesses. You know, decide to stay in place from year to year, don't close their doors or, you know, leave to another community. Uh, as it relates to expansion, if you're growing your business, it looks like you're gonna be adding new jobs, machinery, equipment, capital investment. Right, and then business attraction, like how does that happen? A lot of what we'll do then is addition to, you know, researching, meeting with brokers who represent different brands or firms. Um, and physical sites, but then we're also submitting those sites. Uh, to compete with other communities in our, in our region and our trade market that are too trying to, trying to grow just like we are. Right, organization wide, you should know that all the departments are being tasked with really taking a look at. Their key performance indicators, um, so this is, you know, our, our offering of what our business retention. Uh, expansion and traction model would hope to measure in the form of targets, right, so the far right column. Uh, at a minimum, twenty-five annual visits, a year where we're physically getting out. And engaging with local businesses, uh, like we talked about earlier in the slides, how do we know if it's being effective? So we're proposing, hey, ninety percent of businesses are gonna stay right here, right, we're gonna, we're gonna be business friendly and hope that. You know, we're part of their ongoing uh, success. And then, and then in terms of how to quantify that, you know, business expansion or, or doesn't necessarily. You know, have to only be a conversation about are you ready to grow, you know, are you ready to expand, sometimes, you know. Doing those business visits, we just learn about opportunities for general assistance, it may be they, they need help with. Permitting or infrastructure or policing or code compliance or whatnot, so we wanna, wanna quantify business assistance. Um, in that, in that category as well, and again, how, how do we know, how do we measure, well, again, expansion comes with jobs. Right, and capital investment. Questions?
So my question is, and I applaud the effort uh, to document the work that we're doing and that's why. A year or so ago, in the same. A year or so ago, in the same meeting, I was asking the question, uh. Do you all, do you all, uh in the past, how would you distinguish? This budget for fiscal year twenty six as opposed to fiscal year twenty five? And the answer that I would give if I would ask that question is that. We are strategically doing the activities and measuring them. And that that's a fundamental difference between the direction in which you guys are going now. Compared to what's happened in the past, so I applaud you all for that, but I do have a follow up question and and that is. When you look at, for example, ninety percent retention rate, do we have access to information? That we can rely upon to say, oh yeah, this is the retention rate?
So, I I could share with you maybe the approach we're gonna take with how we attempt to quantify that. So obviously, we have access to our, you know, our buildings and permitting department, right, to know, track. The issuance of certificates of occupancy, um and then it's also gonna be. You know, our general awareness and familiarity with our commercial corridors and our business community to be able to recognize. When we have a business that's planning to close its door or exit the market, right? Uh the 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 last category of data is with our commercial listing service, right? So for example, with CoStar, we're able to see in a in a given day or period what the current vacancy rates are. Um for our our commercial properties that are for sale or for lease. So I think the combination of those three um data points, both internally and 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 contractual resources. We should be able to, you know, provide some data as it relates to how we're doing in that category.
And and the reason why I bring that up is because, like I said before, I think it's a great idea. But you have to be careful when you're building a a measurement and management system like this. That you don't paint yourself into a corner and say, oh, we're gonna be able to to measure this. And it sounds good, but then when you dig into the details, you find out, oh man, we don't have the resource to figure that out.
Yeah, I would I would be back on the comment made earlier from from board member Zoka is that. We'll approach this as a a living document that, you know, as we're port reporting activity, either monthly or quarterly. With the city manager's office, for example, it's weekly, right, so again, some of these are our efforts to just document. Maybe get credit for, but really to provide that quantitative data, but stuff that we're already doing, tracking.
Exactly, exactly, okay, thank you.
I appreciate the feedback, okay, I think where we left off, um in terms of reporting tools. Um monthly, quarterly, annually, to the D C D C board and city council. Right, that's whether that's part of our quarterly reports, this board and city council, and then, you know, at the end of the year. Take an opportunity to kind of look back and kind of outline the year that was, so if we're, you know, tracking this data. Obviously, by the time you get to that point, we have a pretty good indicator idea in terms of how we're doing, so again, another opportunity to kind of. Check in and monitor progress programmatically routinely.
Okay, questions or comments concerning this presentation? So you need you need a you need a motion for us to approve or disapprove?
Yeah, I think we have this item for uh for action on this.
Okay, so the chair will now entertain a motion to approve or not approve this particular item on the agenda.
This was sixty, right? We hold sixty. Go ahead and make a motion to approve uh this, since it's a living document, and then once I get going with it. Reevaluate, see how it goes.
So move by.
Excuse me, second.
Discussion. No discussion, the motion has been properly made, seconded, we will ask Miss Alaya.
Abby.
Yes.
Zooka.
Yes.
Savage. Thompson.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Harvey.
Chair Harvey? Got a question, and I don't know, it's kind of back on the application for sponsorship, would that be out of order to just get a clarification question?
Do we have some?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
You'd be out of, they ask a question unless you reopen the item.
Don't open the item.
Reconsider the item.
Don't open the item.
Thank you, Attorney Hager. Okay, we gotta move on. We're going to move on, and the next item on the agenda is. Discussion and board action on final draft of D C E D C bylaws, staff. When everybody get up at once. Stay here, stay here, stay here.
So really, uh what we wanted to do was take this opportunity to check in, we had sent out a draft of the current bylaws. And really were seeking any uh input, any proposed changes, um. I agree, as we were putting the staff report together for this uh for this evening. Uh we remember that there was a subcommittee that was put together, the bylaw subcommittee that was put together that consisted of. Uh the presidents, the vice president, and a board member. Uh at the time, when the subcommittee was put together, uh Mr. Golf was was serving in the role and the capacity of the presidents. Uh Charles Reed was the vice president, and uh the board member was Mr. Zoka. And so what we thought was, since a uh subcommittee had been put together, that it made sense to um. Bring back the subcommittee to finalize the to work with staff behind the scenes and the city uh attorney and. The corporation attorney to finalize the bylaws and bring them to you at a future meeting for a um for a vote. Um given that this evening we tabled the action to have any discussion or any nomination of a vice president. Uh we would ask how the how this board wants to proceed with a um the vacancy or putting. An additional member onto the subcommittee to move forward with the bylaws and finalizing them.
I'd like to speak as far as the board, uh being on that subcommittee. Going through the document, I I think there was a couple of things that were up in the air about like te- um term limits for our board members. Um and the way we, some of these proposals are striking out, um some qualifications of. Folks sitting in the seats as board members, and I just, you know, I I kind of lean towards that we should have term limits, is my gut feel. Um but I don't think that's really addressed in here for whatever reason, and just I have some other questions that. I still think I need clarification on, because I just don't feel comfortable with the document and to move it forward right now. That's me as a committee person, so. As far as refilling, um I guess if you would be serving Mr. Harvey as the president. Would need um another person on the committee to just kind of take another look at it. And um does it have to be the vice president, or is it just another?
It was suggested at the time, um but it does not have to be the vice president, as we were just asking. The board's desires to whether or not they want to have uh appoint someone else to serve in that capacity to finish this uh to finish this task. Um this is something that we've been discussing for several months, uh it came up again earlier this evening with the budget and the administrative services agreements. Uh we discussed it, uh it came up briefly last last month when we brought up the conversation, the conversation was brought up about term limits. Uh we did not incorporate the proposed term limits in the bylaws, but they were uh. Uh included in the staff report as suggested term limits for the board's consideration and feedback. Based on that feedback, then we would incorporate that into the amended uh bylaws. But no, you are right, Mr. Zook, and that that term limit was not incorporated into the body of the bylaws. But we did put at the direction of the board, we came up with some proposed um term limits. For the board's consideration, feedback, and based off of that, then we would move forward with that, at least that section of the bylaws. Move that aside and then work on all the other components of the uh of the bylaws.
And by that, you mean, or at least the term limits, each member of the board should be appointed to serve two years or until a successor is appointed?
That's the suggestion, you know, there was some back and forth at the last meeting about a number of different ideas, and we said, hey. Would you give staff the opportunity to propose something for you to consider, um and that's what exactly what we did, we put something together for your consideration. Um give us your feedback, and then we would incorporate that feedback into into the uh bylaws.
I was just highlighting because it was presented as it was not contemplated at all, but I just wanted to clarify what's in this.
Yes, and then when we bring, our intent is that when we bring this forward, we will provide you with the red line version, so you were able to track uh the changes.
Can I make a a question, um can we do a workshop on this item and allow dialogue as far as. It's getting late now or tonight, ten o'clock, i- is there a way that we can reconvene on this in a workshop session?
Well, yes, but that's where we're, that's why when we presented this several months ago, it was the desire of the board to create a subcommittee. To work with staff behind the scenes to keep this moving, to keep this moving forward and not have this being discussed many weeks, still can be done. But it defeats the purpose of having a subcommittee that to to move, so, but again, I'm here to, you know, I'm here to listen to what the board wants to do. Um but that was a decision at least uh several months ago and why the subcommittee was created.
And I guess I want to know what, because the. Listen, I'm reading around the track changes are included in the document that we have here.
Uh the track changes that we have worked through, um that we have worked through up until a certain point.
Because I guess I'm kind of confused, if I feel like we should do one change one way. And then someone else in the board feels that they feel the opposite, as an example, how how do we get a resolution on that?
That's where we're tasking the subcommittee to get to get consensus from the rest of the board members, but at least through the subcommittee, work and come to an agreement on. On the proposed terms and then bring those items that are still left outstanding to uh to the rest of the board to uh work through.
So I know you've been emailing for input, have you received input from every board member?
Um I've received comments from, off the top of my head, from two board members.
Well, can I make a request to my fellow board members to take a look at the document and then in two weeks, provide any input? Back to Mr. Brera.
Yeah.
And if you are good with it, tell him that in 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 the email that you've looked at it and you're good with as it's written. And then we can regroup as the committee or in a workshop and take all the feedback and hopefully get a final document. Because it it has been dragging out, but I I'm just fearful that. That one person may want something, another person doesn't, and then we don't come to a resolution on to what that item is.
I I think we're we're honestly at a point that we just need to know who wants what and see where we're at us right now. We have a situation where we haven't really received the full who wants what, to really understand where where we need to have a conversation about and come to an agreement on. A potential conflict, and so at a staff level, we have ideas, we have thoughts about certain sections that need to be amended, but again, we're trying to get the board. To be part of this process as much as possible, because it is it is a document that will remain, not just with staff, but with city, but also with the board, and so. It is a document that hasn't been reviewed in several years, so definitely we want to be careful and take our time in the changes that we make, but. At the same token, Mr. Mrs. Zook, you are right, this is something that we've been discussing for quite, you know, quite some time. Um I think Mr. Reed, Mr. Reed hasn't been with with the board now for, was it maybe nine months? So at a minimum, you know, six months, you know, so it it's been out there, we want to see some more momentum, some more action with this. This this document.
I was gonna say, I don't, I I would like to see a final, near final, but I also think in the same vein as we discussed with the budget. For the subcommittee at least, or once you receive all the suggested changes, amendments, whatever, if. You have the track changes, but also include whatever that rationale is so that we can understand, so we'll review it in advance. We come in very educated on the who wears what's and whys, and it's if there's any. Revision suggested, it might be fur ridge or something like that, but we at least understand the fundamentals.
Absolutely, and happy to do so, like then right now, just waiting on.
You know, I'm just. And for me personally, I don't have anything, so that's why I that silence is golden too.
No, no, that's my. I respect that.
Would a ro- uh a workshop be too much?
Um I am not opposed to the word, I'm here to get the board's input, but we, I'm just kind of providing some history, some context about. A subcommittee that had been created to um not have a specific meeting for the bylaw, but that said, if if it's the desire of. Of this board to have a workshop.
Just for the fight.
Just, you know, I I won't, but I I'm just looking to get consensus, like I said, I'd like to move, uh move with the document, so. At at the end of the day, at staff, staff's best interest is just to get the document in a form that we can have a conversation to seek approval on. That's all. However, uh we get there, that's, I leave that up to the board, if we, if the board finds it best to continue with with the subcommittee, that's fine, if the board finds it. Uh more productive to have a workshop, um that's fine too.
Who's still on the subcommittee?
Great, just be there now, technically.
So you need help or a workshop? No, I'm asking. And I just, because we're budgeting time, because it's a stretch getting special meetings and all that, so a workshop would just be more cumbersome if. We're not gonna, and me included, if I'm not, if I have, I've read a cursory, I don't have anything, but if I do have something. I think it's incumbent on the individual, but taxing us with another meeting trying to convene is gonna be difficult and it's gonna kick the can. Um so if we commit to it and we give a deadline of when we're gonna provide feedback, if you give feedback, great, if you don't. Great, and we work with what you have, and then we move forward.
I think I think Greg just alluded to that, he said. Starting tonight, two weeks. If you don't turn in anything.
And I agree with that.
You said you're good.
I'm just, it's the adding of a workshop, so that's why I was asking this.
So in your opinion, you you just want to bring us back to this board meeting in a month?
No, I think we have two weeks to provide, if anything. And then we make the decision post that, yeah.
But then, then that just kind of, we don't have a full committee, then.
You have two of the three members, so we can continue working with the two of the three, you have some level of. Throughout this process, and we would bring this to a to a future meeting, it's quite possible that it would be within thirty days, maybe not. Maybe not, so I'm I'm a bit hesitant in committing to saying we bring this back in thirty days, not knowing the level of comments that we're gonna receive. The goal would definitely be to bring it back in the next thirty days, only because we have been talking about it and wanted to get this finalized for a while now, but at the same token. It is an important document, and we want to make sure that everybody is is on board with the proposed changes.
And that's what I think the ra- if the rationale is also provided, that'll give, as we do our due diligence to review. The rationale, oh, I understand what or why, historical context, whatever the reason may be for whatever the limited or proposed amendment might be.
So would a motion be fair to say we allow the full board, given Mr. Bratton, I don't know his schedule for the rest of the week. By closing business Friday to email you whatever comments, good, bad, or indifferent. By the end of this week, and then the subcommittee can meet Monday or Tuesday next week, evaluate those comments, if that's enough time for you to. Compile them.
We consolidate the comments, have a meeting of the subcommittee, go through them, and then work through that with our uh legal team.
Okay, Mr. Shelby.
Mr. Shelby and Mr. Hager to work through that.
Okay.
Because at the end of the day, this the bylaws. Because at the end of the day, this the bylaws will also need to be presented to city council, they will need to be approved, so, yes.
I think at ten oh four, that's my motion.
Has there been any barriers, has there been a barrier to, I mean, I'm just kind of new, has there been a barrier to completion?
Um, I I I don't know that I call them barriers, I just say um opportunities, so for example, we have the appointment of new board members that are gonna. Getting themselves acclimated with the budgets, with sponsor, there's been a lot that's been uh discussed here within the last sixty, ninety days. About changes to economic development policy, sponsorship policy that is in some way somehow wrapped to the bylaws. And then this evening, we talked about the budget and talked about having more time, well, if you look at the bylaws, the bylaws have a set time when. The development corporation is gonna have a joint meeting with city council and when the budget's going to be approved, or if we look at it. You know, logistically, it just doesn't work on how we try to put together an economic development strategy for the next fiscal year, so we need to. This was a good exercise for all of all of us to learn through, work through, and understand that we need to change those states. And have a co- budget conversations earlier on than what we were having um here, um like, for example, now.
To answer your question, the word I would say transition. Because for for, because for a while.
Like every quarter, somebody.
Yeah, for, yeah, because we were moving, and for a while, we had only five members. And then Mr. Reed has been gone six months. And uh who else was on the committee, oh, yeah, and.
He doesn't, he doesn't count, but let's just hard.
And that that's that, if if you got point to one thing, it's transition.
And I do, I think, um as far as the living document, I know that there's finality in our bylaws because it's our governing document. But I do think it is a living document, and there's a period of time that these are reviewed again. And and as you said, you know, whatever may have happened, we may need to implement a change or an amendment, but we're continuing that as well.
And and that was part of my mindset as to why the delay, because we only had five members. And so what about the other two, how are they gonna feel, shouldn't they have a chance to weigh in, so, that's why I said transition.
Well, y'all been kicking the can a long time, and y'all give me one kick. I'm so, I I hear what you're saying, but it's, I'm like, well.
And if you need more time.
That's what I say, he needs time.
I I was going for this week, but if you want to go to next week, I'm fine, because we do want.
I was almost like, let's, I'll vote to move.
And at a staff level, we'd be happy to meet with any board members that want to talk about specific sections of the bylaws, or get a better understanding of the bylaws and how they all work. We'd be happy to meet uh outside of this meeting to kind of work through that, so I extend that offer. You're welcome.
I don't always like kudos to you, the policy changes, can I help shake everything, because we're always like.
Yeah, well, that's just it, when we talked about this at the beginning of the of the calendar, we talked about how you would eventually see all the pieces come together. Um and now they've come together, but they've come together fast, so it's like, okay, hang on, catch up, you know.
So good job, good job.
Thank you very much.
Nobody leaving.
So, so how do we, how do we move forward from this?
Are we tabling for now?
We we ta- we table it and then we we provide all our changes to staff and then. The subcommittee, which is Greg Zilka. I didn't sign up for that, uh but anyway.
Just forcing you there, you're tired.
And me, and is there a third member?
It doesn't have to be, I'm just saying, whatever is a desire of the board, we can leave it as as two and we can move forward with the two. There isn't anyone that would volunteer to be a part of the committee, that's fine, but it's not mandatory.
If no one's speaking up to join, uh just make a recommendation that Mr. Bratton, if nobody else is gonna jump in, if Mr. Bratton wants to jump in, then. He's got a chance at it.
We'll extend that every table, I'll have a conversation with them um this week.
I don't know if there's, I'm not hearing anybody saying me, 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 so if there's not.
I'll join, but it depends on when y'all leave.
I don't know, it'll be during business hours, usually on a zero call.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so there is a third member, all right.
So I have to catch up, I've been kicking the can a long time.
You gonna carry that can to.
That can's gonna get kicked out. I sure don't want to be that kid. Anyway, okay, so, um.
We're just table, no, in my understanding, if we're gonna table, we don't need a motion.
Okay, so that is table. Until the next time. I I think, I think we.
Table two?
Okay, so with everything being said, all minds being clear, this meeting is over at ten twelve.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate your time and your feedback.